People with a history of violence such as those involved and convicted of domestic violence and those with mental illness where a healthcare professional has determined that you're a danger to yourself or others, you are no longer allowed to possess a firearm. You're placed on that list. Local law enforcement uses that list to determine who in their community should not be in possession of a firearm.
The goal police and the city attorney say is to create a greater degree of public safety by taking weapons out of dangerous hands.
Prohibited purchasers are potentially very dangerous and we are taking every step we can to keep guns out of their hands. This city attorney's office is placing special priority on combating gun violence and preventing it in the first place.
Here in the city of Los Angeles, police say there are some 2,300 individuals on the prohibited persons list. The next time someone on that list attempts to purchase ammunition, police say they can expect a knock on the door from the LAPD. The LAPD is encouraging individuals who are on the prohibited possessors list who possess firearm to contact local law enforcement to turn in their weapons voluntarily so they don't run into problems in the future. And it's no secret just how dangerous the work of law enforcement officials can be. Yana K takes us to an annual awards ceremony that shines a light on the bravery of LAPD officers.
In 1989, LAPD Officer Michael Flanagan and his partner unknowingly drove into a planned ambush by gang members in Watts. He was shot by a 12 gauge shotgun and was still able to maneuver his car and drive himself and his partner to safety, but he suffered major injuries.
My left arm received 39 pellets, my right hand received 19 pellets.
Flanagan is receiving the Medal of Valor Award for his bravery and his family couldn't be more proud.
He like deserves that award, like I honestly like I love my dad.
Flanagan's story is just one of the incredible stories told during the Medal of Valor and Purple Heart Awards Ceremony held in Hollywood.
These officers have set the bar for courage, duty, and community. Their heroic acts are intense reminders that every day, the men and women of LAPD put no less than their lives on the line for us.
Emotions ran high as the awards were handed out. Every recipient was met with a roaring standing ovation. Retired Officer Rudy Lemus received the Purple Heart for being shot on four separate occasions during his 18-year career.
I feel honored. I didn't expect this much glamorous. I thought it was just gonna be a simple award, so I feel honored.
In the 144-year history of the Los Angeles Police Department, the Medal of Valor has been awarded 636 times.
That's what being a Los Angeles police officer is all about. It's about bravery and it's about sacrifice.
A total of 42 LAPD officers received awards here today. Forty received the Purple Heart and two received Medal of Valor honors. I'm Yana K for LA This Week. The Los Angeles Police Foundation hosted the awards ceremony. Last week, we took you along as Mayor Garcetti knocked on doors in Venice asking residents what City Hall can do for them. This week, Rasha Goel reports on yet another way the mayor is bringing City Hall to his constituents.
Questions, concerns, or complaints, residents seize the occasion to address their issues with Mayor Eric Garcetti at this makeshift outdoor office on a curbside in Boyle Heights.
I've done office hours for 12 years. This is the first time in the street, but I love it.
I talked about widening the sidewalk, talked about needing more parking, helping with the building owners to make it look better.
This curbside pop-up desk is an outdoor version of the help desk at City Hall Garcetti opened when he took office this summer. The idea is to make the mayor's office more accessible to residents.
We're getting people connected with the right people. This becomes our work product. You know, usually people can tell us in a minute what the problem is and then it allows us to start working on that problem immediately.
On this day, residents only had to walk down the street to talk to their mayor.
I think it shows, you know, really good, I guess, ideas on his part of opening himself up to the public and coming out to where the people are.
While a pop-up desk right outside your door would be ideal, the doors to the mayor's office at City Hall are the next best thing. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The mayor pop-up desk was held on Parking Day, an event that highlights the need for open space by turning metered parking spots into temporary public space. The mayor's pop-up office occupied one of those metered spots. Texting friends or your parents to tell them you're running late? A considerate thing to do, but if you're behind the wheel, it can wait. That's the message behind a campaign aimed at stopping texting and driving. Anna Marcos reports.
Another red carpet for these American Idol stars? Not quite, but it is a red alert. A campaign asking people to take the pledge not to text and drive. The It Can Wait campaign put on by AT&amp;T has brought celebrities and city leaders together to get the word out.
What stinks is that it's our generation right now. It's my teenage generation because we're so involved with our phones and I can't go, I can't leave the house without my phone, but it's, it should almost be habit where when you get into the car, you just put your phone away.
I took the pledge because I almost lost my life.
Young people from the Weingard East LA YMCA have made a public service announcement and helped collect 3 million pledges from people who commit not to text and drive.
Join AT&amp;T and the It Can Wait campaign to pledge to never text and drive.
One of our focus areas is social responsibility and today's message is really all of our social responsibility, that it can't wait.
Several people took the It Can Wait driving test and failed. The conclusion was pretty clear. Multitasking, as in text and drive, is a dangerous option.
My reaction with the game was like very, I think it's very real. Like you, you cannot text and drive because you lose, you lose what you're doing. You're not texting right or you're not driving right.
I'm addicted to texting. I texted so much when I had a BlackBerry that I actually popped a tendon in my thumb and had to have surgery. I've learned to pull over and stop the car.
Here are some sobering numbers. According to city leaders, people who text and drive are 23 times more likely to crash. And in fact, those people end up in about 100,000 accidents a year. Another alarming fact, about one in five people have surfed the web while driving at some point.
When you're in a car with somebody else who's texting and driving, call their attention to that and say, are we not important? You know, no text is worth a life.
Now advocates hope more Angelinos will take the pledge to put their cell phones away while driving because most often, it can wait. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
If you want to take the pledge not to text and drive, visit the It Can Wait website at itcanwait.com or type in hashtag #ItCanWait. This time of year here in the city is alive with events celebrating Latino Heritage Month. Gil Reyes takes a look at some of the events the city has planned.
Here it is, the cover art for this year's Latino Heritage Month Event Guidebook, your source for art exhibits, film screenings, concerts, and more, each one spiced with Latin flavor to celebrate the season. Local artist Yolanda Gonzalez created the cover.
She couldn't be here this morning, but we look forward to celebrating her in the next, you know, month or so and be able to highlight all the wonderful work that she does.
And highlight the works of other Latino artists from our region. Many of them have received valuable exposure through Latino Heritage Month special events listed in the guide. Take the brother-sister team of Anselmo Sinclair Ortiz and Angela Maria Ortiz S. Their photography also featured in this year's booklet.
They asked us to submit about five or six images and, and you don't know what they're gonna choose and, and it's always really wonderful to open up the catalog and go, oh, there's one of my pieces.
It's an honor just for, to share what I see through other people's eyes, so I'm happy about that.
Que viva Mexico!
Latino Heritage Month kicked off in September with El Grito festivities at City Hall. Sample works of Latino artists at events like the Los Angeles Hispanic Heritage Festival at MacArthur Park on Sunday, October 6th. Also, the exhibit Art and Film in Mexico. That's every Sunday in October at LACMA. For the first time this year, the Department of Cultural Affairs is planning to use smartphone apps to spread the word.
And again, thank you for helping us to share this with the community and please come to some of the events.
And something a bit different this year, instead of honoring three prominent members of the Latino community, the city will honor 15 Latinas, one from each council district. That special ceremony to take place at LA City Hall on Tuesday, October 15th. On Alvera Street, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Councilmember Martinez says the booklets will be available at district offices of each council member. You can also access the information online at lahertigmonth.org. Award-winning author Ray Bradbury was a longtime supporter of LA's public libraries. Now the city's thanking him with the posthumous honor. Here's Anita Bennett. The late, great Ray Bradbury now has his name permanently etched outside his favorite library.
I know my dad would feel so proud and honored.
As his family members and fans looked on, the Palms Rancho Park Library was dedicated in Bradbury's honor.
Ray was a Chevy and Hills resident for many years and was a regular at this branch, as many in this room know, where he gave readings and often met with his fans and admirers.
The sci-fi writer grew up in LA during the Great Depression and he often spent time in libraries reading and learning about the world.
Libraries were his university as there was no money available for him to go to college.
The iconic author, who's best known for penning Fahrenheit 451, helped raise money to keep LA's public libraries open. In 2009, before he passed away, a room was named after the author at this very same branch. Since then, City Councilman Paul Corretz has spearheaded an effort to honor the writer once more.
Ray Bradbury clearly deserves this recognition and I'm pleased that we are able to gather here today to honor Ray by dedicating the Palms Rancho Park Library to him.
Bradbury died last year at age 91, but his name will live on at this place he loved so much. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. During his career, Bradbury wrote nearly 50 books and won numerous prestigious awards. The main thoroughfare in the valley was showing its age, but a facelift is making the business and entertainment corridor the heart and soul of the community once again. It was a ribbon cutting not for a new park or building or rec center, but for improvements on one of, if not the busiest, street in the San Fernando Valley.
I have no words to say how excited I am about what happened here. We've been waiting for this day for years to have the streets redone.
Grateful residents joined city officials and public works crews on Ventura Boulevard in Sherman Oaks on a recent Monday to inaugurate what Councilman Tom Labonja's office is calling the Ventura Boulevard Street Lift.
If a street looks like it's cared for, that means people care and people in Sherman Oaks care.
The weeks-long effort by the Bureau of Street Services repaved one mile of Ventura Boulevard from the 101 freeway to Van Nuys Boulevard, installed 15 concrete bus pads at bus stops to help extend the life of the street, trimmed 220 trees, and planted 30 new trees.
Now we can say that Ventura Boulevard looks exactly the same way on either side of the freeway. I know some of you were complaining about, oh, the other side is more beautiful, but guess what? Now we have this great, great segment on Ventura Boulevard, without a doubt the most important boulevard in the city, in the, in the, in the San Fernando Valley.
Public Works officials thanked business owners for their patience as they continued to operate their businesses while construction was taking place right outside their front doors.
The city worked very closely with the community to address those issues and make sure that the work was completed, still in a timely fashion, but in a way that was the least and minimized disruption to the community.
Now that Ventura Boulevard Street Lift is complete, city leaders and local businesses are hoping the improvements made will be more than just superficial, but that it will help create jobs and enhance economic development in this important retail corridor. The city is making over one of its oldest pools, the first ever Mexico Food Fair in LA, and what the U.S. and Saudi Arabia can learn from one another. These stories and more in City Beat. It's all just dirt now, but soon this plot of land at 1122 Cole Avenue in Hollywood will transform into the new Hollywood Pool and Bath House. The site housed one of the city's oldest aquatic facilities before workers began demolishing it late last year. When completed, the new $7 million facility will be completely ADA accessible and more energy efficient. The new pool will have a diving board and a water slide. The city hopes to have the pool complete by next summer. The Los Angeles Convention Center was the site of the inaugural Mexico Food Fair featuring food exhibits and demonstrations by Mexican chefs.
We're getting a lot of very neat samples and a lot of new items. There's a whole bunch of products that I was not even aware of that were out there in the market.
The offerings were diverse, from coffee beans to granola to hot sauce, just to name a few. September 21st marked the 22nd anniversary of Armenian independence from the Soviet Union. Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell commemorated the anniversary in council chambers by honoring our city's two consuls of Armenia.
Council District 13 includes the officially designated Little Armenia in the Armenian diaspora, home to hundreds of Armenian-owned businesses, numerous churches, schools, cultural centers, and a vibrant community of tens of thousands of Armenians.
Los Angeles is home to the largest Armenian population in the U.S. Mayor Eric Garcetti recently spoke at the Third Annual U.S.-Saudi Business Opportunities Forum held at the JW Marriott at LA Live Downtown. Panel discussions included business opportunities in the oil and gas sectors and education and technological innovation.
We also face the same challenge that you are addressing now, of once we became a prosperous oil town, what was the next chapter? What did it look like? And it was a combination of building up and diversifying our economy, of looking to our educational institutions, of doing some of the very same things that Saudi Arabia is doing.
The event was organized by the Saudi Committee for International Trade, the U.S.-Saudi-Arabian Business Council, and Saudi-U.S. Trade Group. It's an oldie but a goodie. A classic tune is still popular today and being appreciated by a new generation of music lovers. Rasha Goel takes us to a special City Hall celebration of the Catchy Song.
Oh, I heard it through the grapevine. Everybody say it now. I'm just about to lose my mind, honey. We're going to declare today, September 25th, as I Heard It Through the Grapevine Day in the city of Los Angeles. The city of LA is proud to join with Motown in celebrating the 46th anniversary of I Heard It Through the Grapevine song, which was written by Norman Whitfield and Barrett Strong along with various Motown artists in 1966.
It's a song from the 1960s by Marvin Gaye, but for many of these young faces, it's a new tune. This song and celebration are helping inspire young kids around the city to be creative and focus on nonviolence.
The most important thing is to bring Motown so we can be able to raise money and instruments, to be able to bring these kids off the streets into a musical arts and culture environment where they'll pick up a musical instrument and create a sound of peace.
Selected students throughout the city received a special gift to help pursue their artistic endeavors.
They will be receiving from one of the instrumental companies, an instrument of their own, so they can use that music to go forward and to go upward and arrive at the top.
When they get into the music movement, they learn to do a lot of other things. It kind of guides them in another direction.
For some, it's been a part of their life.
To me, music is to the soul what the heart is to the body. I can't live without music.
I really want to accept this on behalf of my father who is looking down on us right now, seeing that his family actually moved to the, the next level of actually taking on branding and making sure his legacy and name goes further.
I Heard It Through the Grapevine was a classic in the 1960s, but here again at City Hall, the song continues to rejuvenate the soul of the young and old. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The song was inducted to the Grammy Hall of Fame for its historical, artistic, and significant value. In this week's list of things to do, a 10th birthday party for the Walt Disney Concert Hall, the Global Cardboard Challenge, and Siquevila Downtown. The Music Center presents 10 Times the Party, a free 10th anniversary celebration for Walt Disney Concert Hall. It takes place on Saturday, October 5th from 10:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., right in front of the Walt Disney Concert Hall at 111 South Grand Avenue. There will be dance classes taught on four dance floors, as well as visual arts workshops teaching sketching and ceramics. There will also be dance performances and live music that every member of the family can enjoy. For details, go to musiccenter.org. Put away your iPads, iPhones, and tablets and get back to the basics with the Global Cardboard Challenge, an annual event that invites kids around the world to design and build awesome creations using cardboard and their imagination. The event is being hosted by the Skirball Cultural Center on Saturday, October 5th from 10 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. The Cardboard Challenge is inspired by the story of Kane's Arcade. Kane was the East LA boy whose cardboard arcade became an internet sensation. The Skirball is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. Go to skirball.org for information. Wondering what else is going on this coming weekend? You can stop wondering because Siquevila is here again on Sunday, October 6th. The popular Car Free event returns to the heart of LA where it all began, downtown. Residents can explore 7.5 car-free miles of streets on bike, foot, stroller, and many more creative means of locomotion. The Heart of LA Route helps Angelinos rediscover the origins of the city of angels. It takes place 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. downtown. For a map of the event route, go to siquevila.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. LA's Chinatown kicks off autumn with a centuries-old tradition marked by music and mooncakes. Gil Reyes has more from this year's Moon Festival.
Autumn has arrived in Los Angeles and helping to kick it off is a 3,000-year-old Chinese tradition celebrating the fruits of our labor.
The Moon Festival is kind of like a Chinese Thanksgiving. This is where we celebrate the harvest. It's a time for families to get together and enjoy lots of great food.
And the food most associated with the Moon Festival are mooncakes. Small but filling pastries made of mixed nuts, lotus seeds, and sometimes egg yolk. People exchange them, much like Christmas fruitcakes are passed around during the holidays, a taste of nostalgia.
It's always been a big part of my life when I was growing up to participate in festivals around the Moon Festival timeframe, so I wanted to be here to support Chinatown.
The festival, also known as Zhongzhou, takes place on the 75th anniversary of LA's New Chinatown, an area marked by new businesses and artistic activity in recent years. This fusion of traditional and modern elements is evident with the inclusion of the LA Weekly Music Stage at the festival, with local buzz bands Victory, North American, and Khan Wakan helping to celebrate. There's also a craft beer garden, a baccarat lounge, also Chinese arts and crafts.
They love to share the culture and just kind of feels like a piece of China here.
Chinatown kind of feels like a second home to me. It feels a lot like China and helps me to really feel at peace with LA.
Celebrating the Moon Festival Los Angeles-style. In Chinatown, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Moon Festival is celebrated in Asian countries on the 15th day of the 8th lunar month. This year, that fell on September 19th. Well, the Moon Festival is behind us and so is summer, but the Los Angeles Zoo helped families keep cool during the scorching month of September with its weekly It's Cool at the Zoo program. One activity of the It's Cool at the Zoo program invited zoo goers to help paint a mural on this truck in the eucalyptus grove. Families took refuge in the shade while helping to create the animal-themed masterpiece on the so-called Mobile Mural Lab. Zoo goers were also treated to ice sculpture demonstrations during the month of September.
We decided, you know, it's hot in September and we just wanted to give our visitors a good opportunity to cool down with both some cool activities that are actually physically cool and some cool activities that are fun cool.
Mister's throughout the zoo also kept zoo goers cool as they visited with the animals.
I saw a deer with a long neck. That was weird.
Billy the Elephant also got in on the act, cooling himself off to the delight of onlookers as families say goodbye to yet another summer. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my school.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov. Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Don't worry Patty, this isn't gonna hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Open wide.
Remember Bonin is here. Okay, Mr. Bonin is here. Mr. Englander, Corretz, Pacorian, Labon, Ms. Martinez, O'Farrell, Mr. Parks, finally, our city attorney. Patrice was going to fill in and be city attorney. We are all very happy to be in the Valley today. Today's date is Friday, October 4th. This council, as you know, meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM, and you're all welcome. Now, we do not have a quorum as of yet. I do believe we'll have one in a minute or so, but at this point, oh, and I apologize for not giving you the signal, but we can start out with our presentations. So at this time, if I could call on Mitch Englander and Mayor Reardon, Tom, tell the mayor he's up. Let's give it up for Mitchell Englander.
Thank you. We're waiting, we're, yes, absolutely. This, I have a presentation for Reardon, but it's, it's the good one, Kathleen Reardon. We've got, we're honored to be joined by, by her dad is, is here as well. And her mother, both, and her sister. We've got them all.
Do you see a camera there, Doc?
No.
Don't screw up today.
I have a dear friend of mine, Kathy Reardon, who is, needs no introduction to this body or this city, nor does her family, and, but she is a very unique individual who has dedicated her life to protecting animals, starting with the Wildlife Way Station, which she got involved in many, many years ago in 1993. I'm going to take your sticker off for photo ops, so we'll put it in there. Thank you, Tom Labon. She's, you know, it's always got the photos down. And has really brought a new leash on life, so to speak, in getting involved in Valley-based animal rescue shelters, such as New Leash on Life, and the Los Angeles Board of Animal Service Commissioners for many, many years, has done so many things to promote spay and neuter the overpopulation, to control the pet population, to make sure that pets were adopted and cared for. We haven't had an activist so passionate about animals and animal rights and protecting those who can't protect themselves, quite frankly, and has done so much in the city of Los Angeles. I don't know where she gets it from. And the apple doesn't fall far, but we have been blessed because of, because of her efforts, the animal rescue friendly policies, and updating our municipal code amendments, the department's wildlife team, animal rescue, large animal evacuations, everything you can fathom, and getting involved in the bond to build additional animal shelters, bringing in nonprofit, public-private partnerships to get involved, all the volunteers that run our animal shelters. We've got the leader here who's actually really the cornerstone of that entire effort, Kathleen Reardon. She's, give her a round of applause. She also serves on the Reardon Foundation Board of Directors since 2000, which is providing opportunities for Los Angeles youth. But more importantly, she's a dear friend, a resident of my district, which I'm proud to have her in CD-12. She's been a dear, dear friend of me and my family, but what she's done for so many Angelenos and dedicating her life as a volunteer to these efforts is unparalleled. And so it's a great honor for me and on behalf of the entire city council to have her family here and supporting her as well, to present her with a resolution of congratulations to say thank you.
Thank you.
For making such a great difference in all of our lives. We really, really appreciate it.
Well, Mitchell, Mr. Englander, before you present, there are a few members on the queue that would like to speak. First being Mr. Corretz, Paul Corretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Mitch gave a great summary of everything that Kathy has, has done. I'd like to think she's the, Reardon, that has had the greatest impact on the city of Los Angeles. In terms of helping the people that, I shouldn't say people, we, we think they're people, those of us who love animals, but helping the animals that don't have a voice. So she has been the animal's voice in the city of Los Angeles for so many years, and I consider you a kindred spirit. We both do what we can on these issues, and you have had such an impact, and I know that's, that's not going to end. And I look forward to working with you for many years on these issues and trying to continue to take up the cause of the animals and ending animal cruelty and moving towards a system that, that doesn't euthanize the kind, the, the numbers of animals that we do now. So I thank you for all your great work. Of course, I thank your father for all of his great work too, kidding aside. So, an accomplished family. There aren't many that have done more for the city of Los Angeles than the Reardons, so thank you both for everything that you've done.
Okay, I too want to thank you, especially for your efforts to make it this a no-kill city, because I can't adopt every dog, but I would love to, so we really need to get to a point. If, if I adopt another dog, I'm sleeping on the curb, so that's, that's not going to happen. Mr. Labon.
The Reardon family, together right there, what a great picture. Kathy, thank you for your leadership. Thank your father. Your father, who was a park commissioner first in Los Angeles, and as a park commissioner, he got to know the whole city. And as, as he got to know the whole city, he knew the needs of the city, and his love for education, his love for family, and then once he was mayor, picking you, it's so special to have you all the time on this commission, which went from animal regulations to animal services. A very big name change, Dick, that you did. So I just want to thank everybody and the whole Reardon family, what a beautiful picture it is. Congratulations, Kathy, for the great job that you do and the whole family. And Mr. Mayor, you don't get enough recognition, but I do want to say something, if I could, Mr. President. After the 1994 earthquake, no one moved mountains, no one moved the city like Dick Reardon did when the valley was struck in Northridge with the earthquake and the Southwest Los Angeles, the freeway drops, all that. You've made a big difference. I say that because earthquake preparedness is a key every day for our lives in Southern California, and your father, who was so instrumental in that, give Dick Reardon a big hand too.
Tom, you have it wrong. It was the people of Los Angeles that turned us around. They're the ones that got out, rebuilt their houses, their businesses, and I'm proud of our city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, Mitch?
Yes.
It's time for me to call on the good Mitch, Mitch O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I accept that compliment. Thank you. Now, I, I just want to say, I haven't had the great pleasure of meeting you yet, Ms. Reardon, but as someone who was a three-year volunteer at the Wildlife Way Station from '99 to '02, I was one of the direct beneficiaries of your great work there, and no one wanted to go in and take care of the exotic birds, so I volunteered. And so for, for three years, I made lots of friends that were macaws and African grays and Amazons, and, and I learned how to take care of, of these unwanted but incredible animals. And so the legacy you've left there is, is amazing, and we will get to no-kill, and that's my commitment as well as a city council member. So congratulations and thanks for all of your work. It's, it's very impressive. Thank you.
Okay, let's give her another round of applause. And truly, Mitch Englander is a good Mitch Englander, and my dear friend, and my right hand, and I love him.
Thank you. You're my favorite Herb on the council.
I better be.
I just thought of you right now.
Better be, all right.
With that, I'd like to turn it over to our honorary Mayor Reardon of the day, Kathy Reardon, if you could.
Okay. Rank has been pulled, Mr. Englander.
I want to talk, Jeannie, who is the one who made Kathy what she is, Kathy's mother, and her sister, Tricia, and we're so proud of you, Kathy. You have been a great leader. You've made our, our family proud. I have only one gripe, that you're much more popular in the Valley than I was.
And humble.
Why don't you say a few words, and we have a...
Let's welcome her. Come on, everyone. Thank you for all of the great work that you do.
Thank you. Well, I, I guess I don't know what to say, because I, I was starting to cry, but I never knew what it was, what it meant to be a commissioner, and when there were a few openings, I suggested some names, and they just didn't happen, and I made a joke to Dad saying, well, fine, just, what about me? And next thing I knew, I had my hand on the Bible, I was taking an oath, and, and it was such a privilege and such an honor, but really, ultimately, the realization of the responsibility came flooding in, and the fear, and what am I doing here, oh my God? But I was so blessed, so blessed to have a, a community, the city residents, the employees of Los Angeles Animal Services, who's welcomed me, encouraged me, guided me. I'm forever in awe of them, and I'm so grateful to them all, because they, they're family to me, and I will continue to do whatever I can for the department. My life has always been animals, and my first rescue was in second grade, and LA Zookeeping in the 70s, and I guess I just live and breathe that, but ultimately, when you are working in animal services, one very important thing that you learn is that people are animals too, and we all deserve, we all deserve that humane treatment, and thank you, Dad. You know, he was the beginning of our first spay-neuter ordinance that the motion was made by Ridley Thomas. Dad signed it, and he got that we needed a whole package. We needed enforcement, we needed to subsidize low-income residents, and that ordinance in 2000, our impounds went from 75,000 down to 50,000 because of him, because of the yes votes from Council Mike Fuer, now our esteemed city attorney. So we're really grateful that the city has backed our, our efforts to decrease the impounds, which is a significant part of decreasing the killings. So a lot more to do, the CAT program you're going to be looking at, and administrative citations and the like, so I'll certainly be making my phone calls to y'all, but I thank you so much, and, and thank you all.
Thank you. Mitchell, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you all again, and, and I can't thank the Reardon family enough for their dedication to the city. So again, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we present this resolution today, and we've all signed it, saying thank you for all of your service and dedication to the city of Los Angeles, to the people, and to the animals. God bless you.
Thank you so much.
Well, I'll tell you a funny story. We'll take, we'll take some photos of them.
Is this okay with the budget?
We, we paid for this out of, out of our own pocket.
We're okay.
No city funds.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll? Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscayeno Sadio, Englander Fuentes, Weezer, Coretts, Kerkorian, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, 12 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Coretts moves, Kerkorian seconds, next.
Committee's resolutions for approval.
Weezer moves, Bonin seconds, next.
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda?
That would be fine.
Items 1 through 4, items which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Specials members, Mr. Bonin?
Two for Mr. Englander.
Item 2. Is that Bob, the one that you were concerned about?
I want item 1.
Item 1?
Yeah.
And so let's hold 1 and 2, and let's prepare to vote on the other items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's move on to the next section of items.
Items 5 through 12 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes require for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Cards on these items?
Cards on items 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 12.
Okay, let's hold those items, and let's vote on whatever is left. Specials members, you want to hold it? Let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, what do we have next?
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations or items called special.
Okay, now, before we go continue with the presentations, Mr. Bloomingfield, maybe it would be appropriate if we took up item 11 right now. It's my understanding, family members are here. Bob, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you for joining us today. On Monday, August 26th, around 6:00 a.m., Ashkbar Abasi was using his walker to cross the intersection at White Oak and Valerio Street in Reseda. He was in the crosswalk when he was tragically and fatally struck. After the collision, the driver fled the scene without stopping to render aid, identify himself to authorities, or do anything that a decent person would do in that situation. And at that point, that driver ceased to become potentially involved in an accident, and basically became a fugitive and a murderer. And today, we have the opportunity to help find that fugitive, to find that person, by creating an incentive and offering a $50,000 reward for information that will lead to the arrest and conviction of this hit-and-run murderer. Detectives have exhausted all leads and are hopeful that this monetary reward will act as an incentive to have somebody come forward with information. Mr. Abasi was the victim of what is all-too-common a tragedy here in Los Angeles. Hopefully, by doing this, we will deter drivers who otherwise would make this cowardly decision to leave the scene of a crime, leaving somebody injured or worse. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Abasi family here today. They are extremely strong to come forward in this very difficult time, and we thank them for doing it. But they're here to ask, and to ask anybody who hears our voice and hears our plea, to come forward with information. So I urge you, colleagues, to vote aye, in the hopes that we may bring this family some closure, and we can deter this type of future crime. Thank you.
Officer Ward?
Where's the officer?
Officer Ward, if I --
Good morning.
Yes, officer.
Good morning. I am Officer Ward. I am the investigator in charge of the investigation that the councilman just described. And we have certain information, but we desperately need to give incentive for members of the community to come forward with information that will lead to actually finding this person. We need to find the driver who committed this crime, and we really need the community to know how important it is to come forward with that information. That is what I need as an investigator, that is what our team needs in order to move forward with this and prosecute that driver.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's, please, let's hope someone calls in, gives us the information we need, and let's go out and get this guy. All right, now, thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield, for bringing this to our attention. I do have one card. Mr. Walsh, would you like to pass? Okay, Mr. Walsh passes. Members, let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
This motion passes.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Mr. Weezer, you may want to begin to make your way to the center aisle. You are the next presentation that we have for today, but just take your time. Mr. Weezer, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and colleagues in public. It's my great pleasure to present this morning a very special resolution in honor of one of the city of Los Angeles' most anticipated culinary events that started a few years ago here at this El Pueblo. And it first started off as a friendly competition amongst two states in Mexico as to who had the better mole. Mole is a dish that has been probably known as the national dish of Mexico now. It is, right? And the two states that have made it the most popular, where it was founded, is in the state of Puebla and Oaxaca. And through this friendly competition, we now have one of the largest culinary events that happen every year here at El Pueblo, where we have over 30,000 come and visit this event, taste the different dishes, and people judge as to who has the best mole. They have asked me to be a judge of who has the best mole, but I've declined, because I don't want to lose any votes from either state should I choose one over the other. But it's well-known that Oaxaca has seven dishes of mole, and Puebla has only one. And when I was in Puebla, they told me a story how there was a friendly competition, and Oaxaca brought one, they said, "No, that's not good." So they brought another one, they said, "No, that's not good." So they brought another one, finally the seventh one, they said, "This one will do." And Puebla only had to bring one, and that one was the best. So that's what they told me in Puebla. Who knows what Oaxaca would tell me, right? So today, we are joined by representatives from the states of Puebla, Oaxaca, Guerrero. We have Mr. Rafael van Rasfeld Poras, who is visiting us from Puebla. Bienvenido amigo. Les damos la bienvenida a la ciudad de Los Ángeles. And they also will be participating in the events. I would like to thank La Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior, also known as UPEX, and particularly its founder, Pedro Ramos, who is the founder of the mole, and Don Alfredo Gomez, president of UPEX. Muchísimas gracias, señor. La Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior was founded in 2005 with the intent of fostering cultural appreciation for the Mexican community abroad. They began La Feria de los Moles six years ago, and it has grown to be one of the biggest Mexican food festivals in the United States. And just last month, I had the pleasure of visiting the beautiful state of Puebla, and the experience was phenomenal. It has unique history, great culture, delicious food, and that really has come to define what Puebla is all about. If you have not traveled to Puebla, I strongly encourage you to do so. It is a great place, and it is a place also where the Battle of Cinco de Mayo happened. And we, as you know, celebrate that here in the United States, as where Mexicans in the United States come out to show their cultural pride. The markings of its indigenous and long-colonized history are everywhere in Puebla. You see it in the architecture, in the churches, in the ruins of temples, in the fort of Loretto and Guadalupe, where the Battle of Puebla took place. And if you smell all the aromas coming from every kitchen, it is certainly a place just to walk down the streets and take it all in. But my trip to Puebla was special because I got to see firsthand why UPEX continues the great work that they do here in Los Angeles every day to preserve our history and culture. And that's the people of Puebla, who are beautiful, intelligent, and humble. For me personal, they treated me with such kindness that I will not soon forget how beautiful Mexico is. And today, two friends that we made while we were there are visiting us from Puebla. They are brothers Juan José and Luis Javier Cue. Bienvenidos a la ciudad de Los Ángeles. And I want to thank them, because they've been very supportive of UPEX, and very supportive of, although they were in Mexico, making the event here, La Feria de los Moles, one of the biggest events that we have in the city of Los Angeles when it comes to culinary experience. These brothers own one of their best restaurants in Puebla, El mural de los poblanos, and the Hotel Descansería. The restaurant has participated in numerous food festivals in New York, Los Angeles, Houston, Costa Rica, and all over Mexico. And if you stop by the Feria de los Mole on Sunday, you will taste for yourself how exceptional their food really is. And so first, I want to present Juan José Cue. He is an enthusiastic advocate of the cultural and historical significance of the Cinco de Mayo battle in the city of Puebla. Last year, he collaborated with the government of the state of Puebla in the 150th anniversary of the battle, and they produced the movie Cinco de Mayo that was released here in the United States. He is a strong supporter of the Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior, both in Puebla and in Los Angeles, supporting their año Feria de los Moles. He has been here for a week, participating in the planning leading up to the feria. And for that, Juan José, I want to thank you on behalf of the city of Los Angeles for helping us bring one of the largest culinary events here in the city of Los Angeles, and expressing the beautiful culture of Mexico, and also its wonderful food. Felicidades, muchísimas gracias.
Well, I'm very thankful to be here, con todos los concejales. Let me tell you a short story about how I met Cinco de Mayo. As a graduate student here in California 15 years ago, I went into a restaurant in Palo Alto and saw Cinco de Mayo celebration in the restaurant. And me, a Mexican, having been born two miles from the battlefield, say, "Oh, these Americans don't know a lot about Mexican history." But in fact, I was the one that did not know much about my own history. Three years ago, I came to Los Angeles, invited by Dr. Hayes Bautista, to see how Cinco de Mayo was celebrated here. And I got very impressed, because it was not only a very Mexican tradition, but also lawyers, politicians celebrated Cinco de Mayo. I had the opportunity to meet a lot of people, like Don Pedro Ramos, all the poblanos here, Jorge Mete, Dr. Hayes Bautista, and I started to think about Cinco de Mayo as something that was of both countries, like a new flag between Mexico and the USA, and something that we can construct on. So, thank you very much. I will continue to work on Cinco de Mayo on Mexican-Americans and on food traditions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And given that I went to Cal Berkeley, he did me the favor, as I asked him not to mention Stanford in this building, but thank you. That's where he was, a student at Palo Alto. And like his brother, Luis Javier is an enthusiastic promoter of tourism and cuisine of the state of Puebla, and served as the chair of the National Chamber of Restaurants in Puebla. He strongly advocates for the use of local products, resulting in large support for local producers and a healthier and sustainable community, which is good for Puebla, but also the world. He is also a big help in promoting La Feria de los Moles here in Los Angeles, and I want to thank Luis Javier for all his work he's done here and in Mexico to continue to support this event and promoting our beautiful culture of Mexico. Felicidades, muchísimas gracias.
Well, thank you very much for this resolution. I've always been attracted by gastronomy and all the dishes that we have in our culture. And I think to promote identity among us and among everyone in other places, it's a very good thing to do, and moreover, with the traditional food. So that's why we support and we promote a lot of our dishes in Puebla and here in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So invite you all this Sunday, October 6th, at La Placita Alvera. It's all day. Come out, enjoy the mole, taste which one you like the best. And it also happens at the same time that Ciclavia happens. And so you could stop by with Ciclavia, ride your bike out there, and work off all that mole you eat on your bicycle. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Weezer, if you just hold on for one second. First of all, I want to say that I have a large group of Oaxacans in the district that I represent, and I go there from time to time, and the mole is wonderful. So, Mr. Sadio, it was about two or three weeks ago, there was the Mexican food tour at the convention center, and I know you were there, Labange was there, I went. And then, I made that statement, and the people from Pueblo loaded me up with mole for the rest of the day. That just shows how serious they -- in fact, I may not eat mole for another few weeks, just because I'm moleed out. But it was excellent, and to the people of Oaxaca, it is excellent as well. With that said, Mr. Coretts.
Oh, I just wanted to ask where the samples are.
That's a very good question. There is some mole here in the conference room, Mr. Coretts. I wanted to invite you all to come out. You want to taste it? There it is. So you have some here in the conference room.
I'll be there.
Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you. There's some mole in the conference room. Thank you.
Thank you so very, very, very much. Mr. Coretts, would you like to proceed with your presentation?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I'm absolutely delighted and proud to be saluting the Studio City Sherman Oaks Encino News on the grand occasion of its fifth anniversary. I congratulate this newspaper and all who make it possible, specifically Big Valley Publications LLC, publisher editor-in-chief Marcy Marks, managing editor Stephen Fino, associate publisher Jim Kaplan, and website manager Brandon Scott, who are all here today. And by the way, while the name of the newspaper highlights Studio City, Sherman Oaks, and Encino, this newspaper also covers and reaches into the neighboring neighborhoods and communities of North Hollywood and Valley Village. And certainly, we know that the media landscape is rapidly shifting, and newspapers in particular face significant challenges. And yet, this plucky newspaper, started five years ago in the midst of a difficult recession, has not only survived, but done very well, while helping people to better understand the issues and opportunities of the day that shape and make our communities great and our city. And it was on October 2008 that the first issue of the Sherman Oaks Studio City News was distributed with a run of 10,000. The positive response from the community resulted in doubling the distribution the second year to 20,000 monthly, with Encino Distribution being added the following year. The Studio City Sherman Oaks Encino News now distributes 30,000 papers monthly, and is a go-to source for local news in the southeast San Fernando Valley. Having such a high-quality, home-delivered, community-based newspaper in the valley is an extraordinary advantage for our valley neighborhoods. Time and again, this paper has been a great source of information for anyone who wants to know about the issues and happenings of the day as they affect our local communities and local life. Everyone who reads this paper, whether it's in your hands or online, is joined together through a heightened sense of community. And we're so lucky to have this neighborhood-friendly, immensely talented media outlet serving our local communities. Now, I know that both Councilmember Kerkorian and Councilmember Labange wanted to speak. Councilmember Labange offers his greetings, but he had to head off to speaking engagement. But I'd also like to call on Councilmember Kerkorian to join me up here as well, and say a few words.
And for the second time, welcome back. We missed you. We missed you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President, members. You know, all of us in public service, I think, worry about the state of journalism nationally as well as locally. And very often, it's distressing to see consolidation going on in the large media outlets and cutbacks in the kinds of reporting that has been done. And that's why it's that much more important that we have high-quality neighborhood publications like the Studio City Sherman Oaks Encino News. This is a... has become an institution in the South Valley, a resource of information for small businesses, for residents, for the community organizations. And through that kind of outreach and through the kind of journalism that they're doing and the kind of advertising that they're providing to our small businesses, they're really helping to bring our communities together, energize our communities, create a higher level of activism in an already very active community. And so this recognition, and I thank Mr. Corretz for inviting me to join, this recognition is not just about an anniversary of the creation of a news publication. It's also, I think, a celebration of the relationship between this publication and its community and the tremendous level of activism that that relationship brings. So congratulations on five great years and many, many more to come.
Thank you.
And we have individual certificates, but we also have a certificate for the paper itself, signed by all the Valley Council members and our council president. And I'll read the last clause, which reads, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Los Angeles City Council honors and salutes the Studio City Sherman Oaks Encino News on the grand occasion of this important newspaper's fifth anniversary, and furthermore congratulates everyone who helps make each and every issue a major event for so many readers. Through five years of steadfast ways and caring deeds, the Studio City Sherman Oaks Encino News has made the San Fernando Valley and the city of Los Angeles better places in which to live and work." So congratulations on five very successful years.
All right, congratulations.
Would you like to say a few words?
Okay. Well, when I dreamed of one day having my own newspaper a long time ago, I didn't actually think it would come to pass. But with the print word shrinking, we're very happy. I started this to find a way to reach the community. And you stressed the community is to resource the community needs, and we're so happy. They've welcomed us the way they have. Before, there were large newspaper chains. There were frontier newsletters printed on presses, brought out from the East Coast by wagon trains, because the editors felt it was important that citizens knew what was going on in their township or village. We are a descendant of those and also from the LA Weekly, where I learned the newspaper business in the 80s. And that's where I met Jim Kaplan, who 10 years ago founded a community newspaper called the Studio City Sun. And when the Sun went out of business in July 2008, I said, "Well, Jim, I'm going to keep this going, and we're going to call it the News, and this time, we're doing things my way." So, that was five years ago, and we're still here. And I'm so grateful to you all for the support, the community. And I would like Jim to say a few words, too.
Please, come to the...
Thank you very much.
And Jim, she's strict.
Yeah, she's good.
Okay, so I think you better do what she says.
Marcy and I have worked together in the newspaper business since like 1982. And when we first started at the LA Weekly, there were about 20 people working there. So, we know how to get the job done. And I would just like to say that having a community newspaper in a community tends to increase the sense of community. So we respect that. We're very cognizant of that, and that's the basis of what we try to do. Create a community... You know, let the community know that they're already there. We shine a little bit of a light as much as we can. Sometimes, it's a little harder than others. And in the words of Mark Twain, "Those who do not read the newspaper are uninformed; those who do read the newspaper are misinformed." Thank you very much.
But not this newspaper.
Not this newspaper, though. Thank you very much.
And thank you again for everything that you do for the community.
We have to get back because we have an issue to put out. We're going to the printing press tonight. We're holding the cover for a photo.
Well, thank you again for everything that you do for our community.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers.
Again, congratulations so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz and Mr. Krikorian. If we could quickly go to Ms. Martinez for an introduction.
President, colleagues, I'd like to join me in welcoming Ms. McHale's classroom from Will Rogers High School. Please stand up. High school students visiting us here at our city council chambers. Welcome. Thank you.
Our leaders of tomorrow. Okay, Mr. Bloomingfield, are you ready to move forward? The floor is yours.
Well, I'm talking if we could bring up the students, but I'll get us moving here. Colleagues, it is my great pleasure to be here in the valley this morning. I love having the meetings here in the valley and to recognize students from Canoga Park High School. Go Hunters, all right? Canoga Park High School is one of three LA schools participating in the Safe Routes to LA River project that's being run by the National Park Service. And it's also in conjunction with the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, as well as the LAUSD, the LA School District. Now, as many of you know, Canoga Park High School is situated at the headwaters of the 51 miles of the LA River, sitting at the confluence of Bell Creek and Arroyo Calabasas. Now, for the last several years, the students of Canoga Park High School have worked to strengthen the connection between the school, the community, and the river. They established a garden at the headwaters where they were able to raise farm animals and have been active in the Future Farmers of America. And it's really something special to see, right in the middle of Canoga Park, an urban area. You go back there, and you're just shocked to see these animals and this farm that they have developed. It is, you know, sort of a throwback to the way it used to be, but it is just so out of character with the surrounding communities. It's really something special. Now, all of these serve the kids, get the kids out and active in the community, get them interested in science, as well as raising awareness about the river and to educate future river advocates. As you may... You know, I've been involved in river stuff since the early 90s, when I used to work for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. And I've actually been involved in your project, probably before you remember, years ago, helped helping secure your Prop 84 grant, which helped get the Green Learning Garden together. And it's really something... It's a special time. We got Schwarzenegger to sign something back then and got some funding. But I want to invite everyone to attend and participate in the October 17 Public Hearing, the Army Corps Hearing on the LA River Ecosystem Restoration Feasibility Study. It is something that impacts the entire river. It's great to see a new generation discovering the river, working to increase awareness, particularly with 120 LAUSD schools within a mile of the river. These students here at Canoga Park are setting a great example for students and schools across the valley and around Los Angeles. So congratulations to you, and I want to give you each a certificate of congratulations here.
This is generally for the schools. Diane? Gabriella? Gabriella? It says Deanna.
Sorry.
You're wearing someone else's jacket. And Madelyne?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then, did you guys want to say a few words? You want to say a few words?
Sure. So, basically, during this project that we participated in over the last summer, we wanted to create this amazing headwaters garden to commemorate our being on the headwaters. And in doing so, we designed both this, as well as a route for students to travel. And it was a great opportunity to participate in, and I have to thank you all for letting us do this today. I'm sorry.
Well, we worked really hard over the summer for this project, and we really want to have the river more in our school and...
Great.
Okay, once we have the river to our school, we want to have little events and activities and also have... Use it for our PE class and also have a class which will educate students from the environmental and veterinary magnet, too.
Once again, I thank you all for this.
No, we thank you, everybody. Let's give them a great big round of applause.
Thank you.
You truly deserve it.
Great. Thank you so much.
So that concludes the presentation portion of today's council. I'd like to move to Madam Clerk, item two, which was called Special for Mitch Englander. Yes?
And if you don't mind, I'm actually going to do this from the podium with a couple people behind me.
Go right ahead.
Now, I know this is out of protocol, where we've got an agenda item, where we're actually presenting the agenda item from the podium. But it is for good reason. We got together... It was actually two of us about five years ago. Wayne Adelstein and I sat in an office and talked about what can we do for Northridge? What can we do with the Boulevard along Reseda, which is the gateway to CSUN with 38,000 students? What can we do where it's tired and we have to create some incentives so we can liven up the area? What can we do with stakeholders to get people involved and engaged? And actually, this came right before that, on the heels of when bids go bad. Sometimes, business improvement districts don't re-up. And when that happens, oftentimes, they invest in infrastructure and other things that then is not maintained. And so what happened at that point about six years ago, right before we had this conversation, is the trashcans along Reseda Boulevard weren't being emptied because the bids put them in, but the city wouldn't pick it up. The planters that were planted along Reseda Boulevard weren't maintained and weren't cleaned up, and the planters became trashcans themselves as well. We went around and knocked on all the doors of the businesses and asked if they would empty the trash in front of their business, and most of them said no. Most of them said, "We didn't put those trashcans in. It's not really our responsibility." So a group of people from Northridge, Andrea Alvarado, many others, got involved, created a Northridge Sparkle campaign. But from all of those things, we got involved with three neighborhood councils, and Wayne and I put this group together called New Vision. And New Vision met for three years. We created a formal group, and we raised $125,000 through three neighborhood councils, which is incredible, and the city council office, where we pitched in all of our funds and we hired an expert who's no stranger to this body, Bob Scott. And I knew Bob from working with him on the Vision 2020 Plan for the San Fernando Valley 13 years ago. I think we started on that one and got that done. And so we brought Bob on board and worked with all of us, and we had all kinds of community roundtables and discussions, a partnership with CSUN and the Museum of the San Fernando Valley. So joining us today are Bob Scott and CSUN, Colin Donahue, who's been a phenomenal leader in this. In fact, they brought our New Vision Plan, which we're going to be distributing to all of you. They got hung up at the printers last night, but this is an incredible plan that you'll have on your desk this afternoon. It's phenomenal. It's the first time in the city's history... This is historic, where a community has gotten together to draft a plan, block by block, to say what we wanted the community to look like. CSUN did a tremendous job. Andrea Alvarado, who's here, that brought together our Northridge Village volunteers, others, Don Larson, Wayne Adelstein, who I mentioned, Steve Harris, Margaret Landers, Irene Boyd, Glenn Wilson, Scott Sterling, Jerry Fait, the doctor, the great doctor from the Museum of the San Fernando Valley, and many others that got together and had this series of roundtables to listen to what people wanted. So here's the idea and the concept of New Vision. Now that we have this incredible historic guide, this roadmap and a blueprint for what we want Northridge to look like, now that we have that, every developer that ever comes in has certainty on what we all want in the community. They know for sure what we want the community to look like. We know that we've worked with all the stakeholders and the residents and the business owners, the university, the chamber, the neighborhood councils, that we want cafes and bookstores and art galleries. We want a walkable community. We want setbacks. We want the ability, when you go to the Performing Arts Center, you're not just driving there for a great theater performance. You're going there and you're enjoying dinner. You're able to walk around. You want transit-oriented commuting options for our folks. One of the things that came out of the New Vision, and because of this effort, we now have a direct transit line from Chatsworth directly into the university, which is phenomenal. There's already two developers that have come up and stepped forward, that have read the New Vision Plan and are now investing along Reseda Boulevard with setbacks and cafes, with places that you can sit and chat and gather and study and learn. And so this is truly historic. We're adopting this today as a guide, but then also for the planning department to utilize it when we update the community plan. So it's the first time anything like this has ever been done. This is really fantastic. I want to bring up, we actually, when we formed this formal group, we elected a leader of the group as well, in Steve Patel, and I'd like to bring Steve up to say a few words.
Thank you to our council member, Mitch Englander. And thank you, Mr. President, and the council members. When we started this, we asked a simple question. When the bid failed and Mitch bought us in and said, "What do we do?", we said, "Well, let's put all the council members, the neighborhood councils together and see what we can do to work together." And we came up with a plan, and we started funding the emptying of the trashcans and planting of the new trees and shrubs along the Reseda Boulevard and, you know, figuring out the watering system and so on and so forth. But more importantly, what we learned is how, when neighborhood councils, when we work together in our communities, what we can achieve. And one of the simple questions that we asked our own community members and ourselves also was, what do we want Northridge to look like and feel like in the next three years, five years, 10 years, 20 years? And when we started to ask that question, we didn't get any answers. Nobody had been asked that question before. So as you folks provide the city's leadership, and our council members provide the district leadership, the neighborhood councils, banded together, provide the local leadership and local vision. And we were able to come up with, after almost four years of working together on a monthly basis, meeting together with our council members' support, we're able to put together a vision plan that addresses what do we want our community to look like and feel like in the next three years, five years, 10 years, 20 years? And then take that vision plan, if you will, the concepts, and then allow the people who wants to do business in our community, developers included, saying, "Here's our guiding document. Here's what our community wants. You know, help us achieve this if you want to be in our community." And then obviously, you know, with the support of our council member, we're trying to make it happen. And like Mitch said, we've already got two developers on board, and we're moving forward. Obviously, we have some great stakeholders. I just want to mention some of the neighborhood councils and the entities who are part of our coalition, if you will. Northridge East Neighborhood Council, Northridge West Neighborhood Council, Northridge South Neighborhood Council, Cal State Northridge, which is a huge stakeholder in our community, the North Valley Chamber of Commerce, and obviously, CD-12, our council members' office. Been a great team, and it's been a great experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And if I could, I've got... Well, here's one for you, Steve. You can hold this up. I know everybody filled out speaker cards up here, but we've already satisfied public comment when we had this in planning. But I would like, if I could, to have just two more quick speakers.
Go right ahead.
First, Wayne Adelstein, because it was he and I that first sat down and came up with the concept of putting this team together, working with our neighborhood councils, raising the money. And I'd like Wayne, on behalf of the chamber, say a few words, as well as Bob Scott, who helped keep this alive, and it was like herding cats very much, as Kathy Reardon would tell you earlier. That's a hard thing to do. It's just beta neutered, all of us. But I'd like to have Bob say something as well. But Wayne, where are you at? There you go. Right away.
Bob, why don't you go first? Okay, I'll make it quick. I understand time is short. I have a gift here for Mitch Englander, because he was with us at the very beginning. This is an official save the date for our initial meeting of Vision 2020, which happens to be on the auspicious date of September 11, 2001. So if you've ever tried to pick a good date to kick off a visioning process, September 11 would not have been it. But this is for Mitch. I just wanted to say that I did serve on the LA City Planning Commission for 10 years. I was still serving when this began. And one of the things that we came up with over and over again is that our communities have to have a vision. It's great to have a LA vision. It's great to have a regional vision, but it's also important to have a community vision, have a sense of community. One of the challenges we have in the city of Los Angeles is a lot of communities don't know exactly where their center is or what they're about. And that's what this is about, is figuring out, putting that flag in the middle of town and saying, "We're going to radiate out from here, and we're going to create a community and a town center." When we... When we did charter reform back in, what, 2000, give or take, one of the things we wanted to see happen with neighborhood councils was this. So we finally, 13 years later, come through with some tangible product that we can use that tells developers and investors what we'll say yes to. It's great to be against things, but it's also very important to tell the people who might help us with our communities, with the capital investments, to know what to say yes to. So the idea here is to seize the opportunity, seize the moment. These aren't necessarily the people who are going to put the money, but they're going to put the time and the talent into making this happen, keeping the momentum going. And my congratulations to Mitch, because he was in this from the get-go, and he's still going.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Next speaker.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Mitch for taking the lead in this effort. Without his support, this would not have occurred. When we first began talking about this effort, it was at the tail end of the failure of the bid, and as Mitch had mentioned, that posed a lot of problems. We recognized that we needed to do something, and they need to be a community effort, not just an effort from the Chamber of Commerce and the business community itself, but bringing together all parties in the community, particularly the neighborhood councils. And I certainly want to thank Steve for taking the lead and providing the leadership in this entire process, that bringing together all these folks, like a herd of cats, is not always easy. But there was a common interest, a common theme, and that's to improve the community, to make the community reflect the needs of the residents, the businesses, and to move forward and making something happen. So I want to thank everybody who's been involved with the effort, and we're looking forward to great things in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I've got certificates here, just as a token of our appreciation, for each of the neighborhood councils, all the stakeholders, the chamber, CSUN, and then individually for all of them as well. We'll present those on the side. Wanted to thank you all. I ask that you at least look at the plan, look through it, and see what ideas you might have for your own community. The idea that a developer can come to your community and know exactly what they can and can't build, and not have, with certainty, and not have to go through years of trying to figure out, "Well, what works in that community? What works with those stakeholders?". Instead of being told no, you give them that roadmap, and it's just extraordinary. If we can do that in more communities, it would be phenomenal. And so we hopefully have created a process that, now that we've got that down to a science, if you will, which it very much became, and a good partnership, that we can expand that opportunity to other communities and lay that out in a much quicker, efficient timeframe. So thank you very much. Give these guys a round of applause. This has truly been remarkable and historic for Northridge. Thank you.
Okay, let us prepare.
I ask for your eye vote.
Let's prepare to take that vote. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Cavulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, that item passes.
Thank you very much. This Saturday as well, we'll be, all of us behind us are gathering. We're getting ready to, right now, it's the month of preparedness, so we'll be having the Disaster Preparedness Fair at Fire Station 87. We'll have well over 1,000 people. All these folks will be there as well. But as it's coming up in January, the anniversary of the 20th year of the Northridge earthquake, we remind everybody, particularly from Northridge, to be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Mr. Bloomingfield, I think we should move to Item One. Okay, so Item One is now before us. We do have two cards. I didn't know how you want to... But no, Mr. Bloomingfield has requested that...
Yeah, so I'll speak first, and I'll bring in the two public speakers.
Okay, go right ahead.
It pleases the chair. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chair and members, for allowing us to discuss this motion in a little bit more detail today. Police do a remarkable job, but they're stretched very thin, and they need more resources in a variety of areas. There's a number of reasons for this motion, and why I'm particularly interested in this motion. Couple of years ago, as a state assembly member, I held a domestic violence summit in the west San Fernando Valley, bringing together advocates and service providers for women and children who are in an abusive environment, to help coordinate services and identify gaps and assistance. It was not only illuminating, but it really, that summit illustrated the thirst that there is in the community and the need that's in the community to gather around the issue of domestic violence, to put more of a spotlight on it, and figure out how we can really better deal with this issue. As an outgrowth of that meeting a couple of years ago, the folks in that summit created, and we created a special domestic violence commission that would advise me on public policy matters, and specifically focus on domestic violence in the San Fernando Valley. And that group actually helped prompt me to author several bills that became law on the subject of domestic violence that have helped move that agenda together, and it's been a very active group of community members. So as a city council member, the folks in that former commission that I had were eager to continue the work on domestic violence, and I was eager to continue it. So we rebranded it as a community action team, to be in line with some of the other community action teams that I've set up. And they've been starting to meet and work on some of these issues. And in fact, two of those community action team members are here today, and I think are going to speak a little bit later, Sarah Burdine and Gail Pinkus. Thank you both for being here. But from that community action team came the idea for this motion, and will come many other ideas. But you know, part of the idea was to ask the LAPD what we, as a council, could do to help them with dealing with the issues of domestic violence. I understand we have the Domestic Abuse Response Team, or DART, as one of the resources that we have, which is an incredible resource, and we want to hear and talk about that, make sure everybody's aware of that, because it is such an important... But the other part is to look more and coordinate with the service providers. And also, part of this motion, and the reason that the community action team was focused on it, is the need to sort of rebrand the issue of, not rebrand, but to talk about domestic violence a little bit differently, not just as something that's dealing with service providers, but really also as a critical public safety issue. Because those folks who were involved in it know that it really is a public safety issue. And sadly, there was a horrible incident that happened in my district just a couple of months ago, that I know many of you are familiar with, and in fact, a friend of mine's sister was the woman who was killed in that situation. That underscored the importance of looking at this issue as a public safety issue. So that's why, earlier this week, my staff has been meeting with LAPD and the mayor's office to figure out ways to collaborate on this mission, to provide more resources to the victims of domestic violence and to prevention of domestic violence. We're working with the mayor to coordinate various government activities. And my Domestic Violence Community Action Team is going to continue and start working more regularly with the LAPD to get informed and collaborate, just as the LAPD does with the San Fernando Valley Coalition on Gangs, thanks to a suggestion from Chief Viejas. We're going to continue that. We know the service providers don't have the money to do it all themselves. They need support, and they need this important relationship that they have with the police department, which is why we've asked the LAPD and the mayor's office to be here to report on the types of services that there are, how to coordinate with service providers, and most importantly, tell us how we can do more as a council to help you and your efforts. Because I know every member of this council wants to be fully supportive of the work that you do and the coordination that you do, because it is so important. So we have a couple of folks from the public who want to speak, and then I'd like them to speak, and then to have the detectives speak after that. So if it pleases the president, we could have the members of the public speak at this point.
Yes, we do have two speaker cards, Gail Pinkus.
Your mic's not.
I'm sorry, we do have two speaker cards, Gail Pinkus, followed by Sarah Burdine. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm the executive director of the Domestic Abuse Center here in Van Nuys, and I am also the originator of the DART program. It was begun here in Van Nuys Division in 1994, actually at the invitation of the then captain, because he was concerned about the lack of support for domestic violence victims to follow through with prosecution, to get to a safe place, and invited us in, and we created this team of especially trained LAPD officer and a domestic violence advocate responding to 911 calls behind the black and white. That team has, was extremely successful in not only bringing resources and working with the victim at the scene, but getting victims to understand the importance of prosecution, the importance of cooperating with the police department and with prosecutors, and getting themselves safe and making themselves, availing themselves of the resources that actually were here. It was a controversial program, and if it were not for Councilmember Parks, we would not be in those cars. He fought for us and saw the importance of that immediate on-scene response. DART has changed over the years and has been watered down, where sometimes it's just an advocate in the station a couple of hours a week. There is no team. So I would strongly urge that if there's going to be a DART program in a station, that it is staffed with full-time LAPD officers, with a domestic violence advocate that goes directly to the scene because of the effectiveness of that program. We are also, because we also understand that training is a huge issue in order for officers to respond appropriately.
Great, thank you. Sarah, good morning.
Good morning. I want to thank the council for allowing me to speak this morning in support of Councilman Bloomingfield's motion that's before us. My name is Sarah Burdine. I am the executive director of Haven Hills, and we are a nonprofit that have been serving victims of domestic violence for 36 years. And one of the things that, you know, I really want to support here is, in the community at large, domestic violence sometimes is thought of as only a social service issue. It is not. It is a public safety issue, and it's also against the law. And one of the things that we've learned about victims of domestic violence, they are not aware of our services. And one of the reasons why is we just can't market and publicize. And so it's really critical that we have law enforcement working with us that knows about our services, so they can refer them to us, and we can step in and help build a safety plan. With the Domestic Abuse Response Team, it has been a fabulous program, but as Gail just said, it has been downsized, and a lot of that has to do with the economy. But we really need to take a look at this, because when the victims know about the services and they have the support of law enforcement and folks who come in directly behind, that can connect them with programs like my own, which then provide additional safety net services, we are going to help stop domestic violence. And unfortunately, even though we've been in business for 36 years, the movement has gone on to help stop domestic violence for much longer than that, it is still at epidemic proportions. And I know that here in the San Fernando Valley, which is not the whole city, there are seven police divisions. And in my program, we're connected with the Panga. We do roll calls there. But unfortunately, we really need to be connected with all of the different divisions, so that they're aware of us and what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now I'd like to introduce Detective Monica Quiano and Commander Kevin McCarthy from the Los Angeles Police Department, along with Eileen Decker from the Mayor Garcetti's office. Really appreciate that you're here, and ask that you tell us a little bit about what we can do to help. So thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I am the department's domestic violence coordinator, and as such, part of my responsibilities is to liaison between the community service providers that provide services for victims of domestic violence, as well as liaising with all of our 21 geographic divisions. And to speak to the DART programs, that's one model that we use to provide resources, but because resources are limited within the context of funding for the service providers, we also have to think outside the box and find other ways. So we have partnerships through MOAs with other service providers to act in a referral service. So area geographic areas will refer victims over for, whether it be for shelter services, counseling, intervention services, legal advice. So we do work in partnership, and also, another form that we work alongside is with, through the city task force, as well as the county task force, addressing issues of concern within various communities. And I think it is critical to identify the issue of domestic violence is prevalent, and it is something that knows no boundaries, and it is something of concern that we do address head-on, and to look at in a larger context, as far as being able to bring resources forward, but resources that are going to be appropriate for the communities that we are serving.
Well, good morning, and thank you, members of council, for the opportunity to be here today to talk about a very important issue. I'm Eileen Decker, deputy mayor for Homeland Security and Public Safety for Mayor Garcetti. And my office works primarily with administering the funds that both this city council allocates in the annual budget, which is just under half a million dollars a year towards this program, as well as finding grants and working with private partners who are interested in funding. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the Los Angeles Police Foundation for their great work in working with donors to develop funding for this project, as well as the Department of Justice, who has given us grants to supplement what the city council provides in the annual budget. So we work with allocating the money through RFPs, the different providers are determined, and the LAPD determines based on statistics, those areas of the city with the highest number of calls and need for service, to determine where the DARTs are. Overall, there are six organizations that are funded in 10 divisions throughout the city. Obviously, we would like to fund DART programs in every segment of the city, but right now, our funding, based on what the council allocates, what we're able to get from private partners and grants, allows for the funding of six organizations in 10 divisions throughout the city. And even with those organizations, I would say we don't provide them nearly enough resources that they need. They certainly could do more if they had more resources, but I think at this stage, it's a resource issue, even though the Department of Justice has been very generous, and I do believe the Police Foundation has been extraordinary in trying to raise funds for this project. And we have some very significant private partners, like Verizon, who annually has contributed to the support of the DART programs. But public awareness is a key factor. This is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. You may be interested to note City Hall will be turned purple, I believe, starting next week in honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. But we also have a number of private partners who are joining us in turning lights purple. DWP, Lawa has agreed to do so, but Capitol Records Building is also lit in purple. Staples Center is also being lit in purple in honor of the month. And we're working with a number of other private partners to increase turning different segments of the city purple, so that we can raise public awareness.
Hi, I'm Deputy Chief George Viegas of the San Fernando Valley, and I'd like to talk a little bit about the staffing. One of the questions that was posed, or one of the discussion pieces was, what is our staffing and their expertise and training, et cetera? All 21 stations have specifically trained detectives. That's all they do, that they specialize in family violence, domestic violence, and issues that are particularly crimes and non-crimes for family violence. So we have detectives that are specialized specifically for that, and we also have two DART cars in the San Fernando Valley. And one of the greatest things that we can do is to continue with the awareness piece, such as this motion and other motions and/or other opportunities to create an awareness within the community. Our senior lead officers have the information. They have vines, they have brochures, they pass those out at community meetings. All that information is also provided in different social media outlets that the police department has, and we retweet and we endorse other community-based organizations and help, to help support their funding, so that they can have additional resources.
Do you have any questions or comments? But I want to certainly thank you guys for bringing this forward. I mean, this is the start of, you know, continuing the collaboration, looking at this issue, making sure that we focus this issue as a public safety issue, which I know that you are all in favor of, and you know, the police department does great work. Resources are stretched thin, but we want to do what we can to try to improve that, and really just, and try to do everything we can, because it is such an important issue. And it's one, as you mentioned, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As we move into this month, we will be talking a lot more about later on in this month. But I want to thank you very much for... But I want to thank you very much for coming forward with this and bringing this issue to attention. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. Okay, you know what I'm going to do now? Madam Clerk, I'm going to take three general public comment cards. Marlene Goodman, if you'd come forward. Harold Holmes, and my friend Daniel Gus, please come forward. First person to the podium will be the first person to speak.
Good morning, City Council. I'm just here as an information person. Today, at the federal building, there's going to be a march and speeches given for the David Sheldrick Wildlife Fund. And they propose to ban ivory sales globally in this world. I know the city council can't vote on anything like that, but I'm here to give you all information about it. And it was suggested perhaps that somehow we could partner, the city of Los Angeles could partner perhaps with, in fact, Paul Coetz is going to be speaking there later today. Perhaps we could partner with a city somewhere in Africa, so we could stop the decimation of the elephant population there, which they now kill 36,000 a year. And it's suggested that there are only 450,000 elephants left in Africa now. So it's a national global tragedy. So I just have this information here that I brought, that everybody on the city council could know about it, except just a few. And if somebody would pass that out, I would be delighted. And I thank you for listening to me, and I especially thank Paul Coetz for all the work he does. I love him.
Good for you, Paul. What a way to start your day. Thank you so much. Okay, is it Harold Holmes followed by Daniel Gus? Go right ahead, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President. Honored councilmembers, my name is Harold Holmes. I'm a deputy director for a county animal services agency in a county a bit south of here. I'm also a recovering chief of police, and in the interest of full disclosure, I have to admit that I'm an attorney as well. I'm proud to be here to help honor Kathy Reardon and all the work that she has done for animals for so many years, all the support that she's given, and for animal services officers. As you may be aware, many of those animal services officers are young people, many Latino, working to pull themselves up by their bootstraps to get not just a job, but a career, and hopefully a profession in the specialized animal law enforcement. And I'm here also as a member of the California Animal Control Directors Association, and in reality, because I'm just an old street cop at heart. And I'm working with the mother of an animal control officer up in Sacramento County, who was brutally killed, because he was shot to death by an irate animal owner when he was trying to rescue abandoned animals. We are preparing legislation that would provide for standardized training for animal control officers across the state, that would help make them safer, more professional, and provide better service to the community. And when that bill is prepared and when it's ready, then I'll be bringing that for the council's support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Daniel. And after Daniel, Candido, you're next.
Good morning. I caught my hit-and-run driver, and we're going to find out if the city of Los Angeles is true to its word about prosecuting him. The LAPD has the report, he admitted it, we caught him, let's see if you prosecute him. So now that Mr. Garcetti, Mayor Garcetti, has rehired Brenda Barnett, I'm going to give you a complete switch in my personal policies. You no longer have to go to LA Animal Services to adopt a dog or cat. You can go and buy one from Brenda Barnett, who is breeding her Portuguese water dog on weekends called Cut Water It Had To Be You. Owner's Mary Alice Davis, who's Brenda Barnett's daughter, and Brenda Barnett. So by hiring a dog breeder to run LA Animal Services, Mayor Garcetti is implicitly approving of dog breeding in the city of Los Angeles. There's going to be more on this real soon. In Mr. Labonge's district, on February 1st, we reported to Brenda Barnett dozens of intact, unlicensed animals, February 1st, 2013. Six and a half months later, Mark Salazar, who's her director of field operations, says, "Oh, we didn't get around to addressing the concerns." So you can have an intact dog, and the city won't enforce licensing, the city won't enforce spay-neuter. You can be buying a dog from the GM. So you're a sucker if you license your dogs in this city, because the city won't enforce the law. You're a sucker if you spay-neuter, because the city won't enforce the law. Here's the proof in Mr. Labonge's district, and even me. Two months ago, I'm trying to get my own dogs licensed, two months, and the city doesn't fix out my dog licensing revenue issue. So my position is now, Mayor Garcetti hired a dog breeder, a weekend dog breeder, don't go to LA Animal Services, contact Brenda Barnett or the mayor's office to buy one of her dogs, because that's the new world here in Los Angeles. We don't enforce the law.
Thanks, Daniel. Thank you. Candido?
Good morning, Mr. President, councilmembers. Thank you very much for being here in the San Fernando Valley. With me again are Mr. Cameron, Mr. Piper, and Mr. Tona. I want to thank our leaders here in the city for the things that have taken place since July, the big issue, DWP, and the things that are taking place there. Mayor Garcetti, Mr. Our city comptroller, Governor, and Mr. Wesson, you and this city council. I didn't expect the things that are happening to happen, because I thought we're going to be seeing the same scenario, you know, just a pat on the back, a look, and maybe we'll look at some of the problems there, but we're really taking a deep, long look at some of the situation. The people of this great city deserve the department back. But in doing that, we cannot destroy the workforce. We have probably the finest workforce at DWP. Every time we have a situation in the city, our Department of Water and Power always comes to the plate and hits a home run. If you take a look at cities across the nation, there are some public utilities that take months to get things done. So again, we want to take care of problems at DWP, but we cannot destroy the morale there. The other thing that I would like to talk about is that, Mr. Inglis, it's amazing, I live in your district, and it's amazing that the things that take place in our district. One day, we have a problem, and if a door closes, they open up another, there's always solutions, and there's always someone to step forward. Any area can be improved, and I spend most of my time in Van Nuys, and we're hoping that we can do the same thing on Van Nuys Boulevard. And we need heroes. And Ms. Martinez, over and over again, for a year, we have brought the name of Ms. Benavides, we submitted names, et cetera, and we're still waiting. So we hope that your office will contact us, and that we'll be able to honor a lady who is a true hero in the San Fernando Valley and throughout the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Candido. Good to see you again. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're going to switch back to the agenda. We're going to do Item 7, called, special by Mr. Walsh, John Walsh, please come forward. We are on Item 7.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or just click to J. Walsh Confidential. Item 7 concerns funding for protected left-turn phasing in the westbound direction of Devonshire and Winnetka. We're very happy, it's nearby, we're asking you to vote for it, and we're asking you to keep tuned to public comment. John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org, take a look. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. No speakers in the queue. Let's prepare to vote on this. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. Walsh, you may want to stay kind of close, we're going to go to Item 8 next, and then Item 12. So Mr. Walsh for Item 8.
Mr. President, a substitute motion also has been circulated for Item 8.
Okay.
Well, we're interested in a substitute motion, which the public has not seen, so you'll be voting on something we haven't seen, which is a Brown Act violation. You do this all the time. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, 1,200,000 server requests per year. Okay, this concerns snowflake lights. Isn't that adorable? If you put a gun to my head and ask me to define a snowflake light, I don't know what snowflake lights are. I know that you're asking us for billions of dollars, billions of dollars, to borrow to repair the streets, which are the worst in America, that was in the paper the other day, while you spend $10,000 installing snowflake lights on South, on a street in LA, from Thanksgiving until the New Year in Council District 9. What the hell are snowflake lights? Please, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. City Attorney?
And for the record, I checked with the CLA, the substitute motion was posted on the board.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. Walsh, I told you, you might want to stay close. Well, good for you, sir. Item 12. Item 12 for Mr. John Walsh.
This is number 12.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I understand, you don't know what snowflake lights are either, but you just gave $10,000. Okay, I didn't get up when the family was here grieving and say this, they've had suffered enough in the city with the worst hit-and-run. We have the highest number of hit-and-runs on the planet Earth. Every meeting, someone gets up and talks about a hit-and-run, and then you give another liquor license out. Okay, number, this is the next one, Kun Seolim. And incidentally, most of the people killed are minorities, and most of them are older people. You don't give a damn about this person. You'll keep giving out alcohol licenses, and they'll keep killing. And the blood of Kun Seolim is indirectly on the hands of all of you, until you put a cap on the number of liquor licenses you will give in this city. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Now we'll go to Item 5. Mr. Walsh, it looks like you'll continue to get some exercise, so John Walsh and Rick Nightingale on Item Number 5.
Pass.
Passed by Mr. Walsh. Mr. Nightingale?
Hit on Mr. Nightingale.
Rick?
Yeah.
Did he leave?
No, he's right there.
Come on, Rick, you're right up in the front row, man.
I even forgot.
Come on.
What was it about?
That was Item 5 was the item.
The REAP, yeah. Regarding the REAP thing, I don't know what the city of Los Angeles keeps going with the bureaucracy of the Housing Department and the REAP and so forth, that I even got caught up in this situation a while back, that I had surgery. And I was in a hospital, and the city turns around and sends me a notice saying that they had a complaint against our apartment building. You've got 15 days. When is it that you ever get a notice from any company or anybody, and you have to react in 15 days? Most time, it's 30 days. And so they sent it to the P.O. Box, and that's fine, that's when we pick up our stuff. But I didn't go over and pick it up, so we got into a predicament that we got fined. It ended up costing us $550, because one of my tenants turned around and called up that the screens were bad on her apartment, and I fixed, I was going to fix them.
Mr. President, he is not talking about any of these properties.
Get back on the item, please, Mr. Nightingale.
Well, it ends up that the city has so much stuff going on, that they don't know really where to get information or do whatever you have to do regarding this situation. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
We'll move to Item 6, which I believe was held special by cards. So we'll start off with Daniel, Daniel Gus, Fran Reichenbach, and George Abrams. Go on, Daniel, I'm sorry.
Hi, good morning. I'm sure it's a good proposal. I do have concerns about Mr. O'Farrell, though. The city may not be aware of it, but Mr. O'Farrell is under investigation by the district attorney's office for not living in his district.
But you got to stay on this, though.
You got to give me a chance to make my point. I'll make the connection, I promise you, as Dean Prager's giving me the leeway, like he gives Zuma Dog, and Rick Nightingale, and Miriam, and everybody else. I have the leeway to make my point, even if it's in a circuitous way. My concern is that any proposal being offered by Mr. O'Farrell could become undone at some point in the future, because when elected, he was not a resident of this district. He did not live on Fletcher Drive, as his residency card said with the county voter registration. I'll make my point. He lived in CD1 for the past 20 years. He was not a resident of this district, he's a resident of CD1. The district attorney is investigating it, the Public Integrity Division, yeah, Ann Ingles, yes, I didn't make it up, Ann Ingles of the district attorney's office. If Mr. O'Farrell has been cleared of that, may he stand up and tell us if he's been cleared of that? But the district attorney's Public Integrity Division is investigating Mitch O'Farrell for not residing in his district, because the address on Fletcher Drive that he gave may not have utilities being used, even though he listed himself as living there. So getting back to my point, that this proposal, or any proposal made by Mitch O'Farrell, may fall apart. And I'm concerned, Dion, that it is being offered, everything he's offered could fall apart. So I'm putting you on notice. I'm done with my time, Mr. Kokory, and give me a break, it's 11 seconds.
All right, Mr. Gus. Yes, Mr. Kokory.
The court's ruling involved, with regard to what Mr. Gus was just referring to, a particular council member's allocation of funds from that council member's office, and that was the subject of discussion that was mentioned by the judge. The fact that a council member in this chamber makes a motion, or has a project in their district, does not give license to members of the public to come up and make accusations about that member during the debate about that project. So this is completely off-topic, this was completely out of line, and I just want, for the future, I would like to make clear to the members of the public who want to use the opportunity to come to speak at this podium to attack members, that it has to be either in general public comment, or directly related to a topic that we're talking about. This has nothing to do with the issue that was raised by the judge in the federal action referred to by Mr. Gus.
Thank you for that clarification. Fran?
Yeah, this is Fran, my name is Fran Reichenbach, I'm with the Beechwood Canyon Neighborhood Association. Poor Mitch, sorry. But Mr. O'Farrell, the public was denied the opportunity to discuss this issue, because on September 17th, as the chairperson of Arts Park's Health, Aging, and Rivers Committee, you waived consideration of this item. I'll give my testimony now, but this should be heard before that committee. AQMD says that it's dangerous to have children playing and people exercising within 500 feet of a freeway. It's been done recently, but two wrongs don't make it safe. Currently, accidents on the 101 freeway have the luxury of emergency airlifts to save lives. Cap it and trap people in a tunnel away from emergency help, not a good idea. Our existing parks are suffering a lack of funds to hire rangers. We just talked to Mitch in his committee about this. We used to have 70 not too long ago, and now we have arguably two. We only know one, and that's Pete Stare. Rangers make parks safe. Why add more park land so close to Griffith Park, when we can't afford to protect what we have? The groups around the Hollywood sign have formally asked that you hire park rangers. I say use that park fund to hire rangers. Thank you.
Thank you. Now if I could get George, followed by Alfredo Hernandez, I believe it is, followed by Lori Goldman, and then Mr. Walsh to close. Yes, sir?
George Abraham's Beechwood Canyon Neighborhood Association. I have I object to the city transferring $785,000 for an EIR. We already know a great deal about the environmental impacts of this project. The South Coast Air Quality Management District cited California Air Resources Board Standards opposing sensitive receptors within 500 feet of a freeway. This park is proposed to be within 500 feet of the freeway. Also, this project is also in violation of the general plan. We have 3.75 times the regional park space in the Hollywood Community Plan area, and we're deficient in community and neighborhood parks. If there are going to be more additional park space, it should be community and neighborhood. Also, many of the environmental issues, we know it's unsafe. We've had fires inside enclosed freeway areas. A Palm owner freeway bridge was completely destroyed. That would happen to this project if a fire occurred there. Also, this would be an energy hog because you would have to ventilate and light it. Also, I object to the idea that this is somehow something for the community. If you look at the Friends of the Cat Park, you'll see it's all out of towners. You have the billionaire developer from New York. You have a Beverly Hills resident on the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce Political Action Committee. You have an attorney for the Millennium developer who recently spread $4 million around City Hall in order to get his project developed. And this is not a community-based grassroots effort. So I would think that we need money. If we have, gonna spend that money, we need to spend it on rangers. We have the worst streets, we should be fixing our streets.
Thank you. And I somehow mixed up the order of the cards. So Mr. Walsh, you're up now, and then you're followed by Mr. Hernandez. And I apologize for that.
John Walsh blogging on Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org, or just click to Jay Walsh Confidential. I've lived in Hollywood since 1976. I visited Hollywood and walked the streets of Hollywood since 66, when I lived here then. I'm telling you now, this park, we have enough parks here. And remember, it's one of the last areas of the city with a significant white population. There are many, many areas of the city that have significant minority populations that don't have parks. But because this is the mayor's area, it's getting another park. But here's my favorite part of this. Friends of the Hollywood Central Park, whoever the hell they are and who they're connected with, will be given the amount of $525,000 of taxpayers' money while you're asking us for billions of dollars to repave the roads. They get $525,000. Does it say for what? Oh, to provide services in connection with the preparation of an EIR and associated technical studies. So you're gonna spend, first of all, $785,000 for the EIR, and then you're gonna give the Friends of the Hollywood Central Park $525,000 to help the people who are getting the $725,000. That's what's going on here. 12 to nothing. 12 to nothing. I'm not Karnak, but it's gonna be 12 to nothing, and you sit here quietly. You know, you can know what you can do. We want the information, and I think that this is another issue that the DA should be looking into. Money, I want to know where, who is the Friends of the Hollywood Central Park? Are they incorporated? Who the hell are they, and what are they going to do? And they're connected with the mayor.
Okay, so Mr. Hernandez, followed by Lori Goldman.
Good morning, Council. My name's Alfredo Hernandez. I'm a founding board member of the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council, and we want this park. East Hollywood is a park-poorish neighborhood in this city with a very low median household income with a very high minority population. 20% of the Hollywood Central Park will be within the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council's boundaries, totaling eight acres between Western and Santa Monica Boulevard. Policy CF 563 from the Hollywood Community Plan Update says, "Support the proposal to cap subterranean portions of the 101 freeway for the purposes of creating parkland." Also, policy CF 567B of the Hollywood Community Plan states, "Create Hollywood Central Park as a new cap park over the 101 freeway with a mix of public-serving uses, including libraries." This is already mandated by this Hollywood Community Plan, which was approved by the Council. Covering the freeway is a major step in remediating the harmful effects of living next to a freeway. Once constructed, the air quality over the Hollywood Central Park will be the cleanest and the healthiest in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goldman? Hey.
Hey, hello, Council members. I am the Beverly Hills resident, that is Chair of the Hollywood PAC, but I am also the founder of Friends of the Hollywood Central Park. I would like to correct Mr. Abrams' statement. We have 35 board members, more than one-third of them are Hollywood residents, five of them are his neighbors in Beechwood. So I'm here obviously to support this motion. I'd like to let the Council know, these funds were approved by the Council in July of 2012. All we're doing is changing the lead agency from BOE to Reckon Park. And I'd also like to note, 400, over 400,000 of this amount of money you approved is from the Reckon Park budget. So the park, Friends of the Hollywood Central Park, we have not filed an application yet. We have not filed our initial study or our NOP, but certainly the EIR will cover any impacts, and they'll be revealed once we get our EIR started. So on behalf of Friends of the Hollywood Central Park, I ask you to support the motion, and we want to thank our Councilman Mitch O'Farrell for his support.
Thanks, Lori. Okay, Mitch O'Farrell.
Mr. President, colleagues, back in the 1950s, the Hollywood freeway was dedicated, and it has put a somewhat permanent scar that has split Hollywood in half along very distinct demographic lines. The future of this one-mile stretch of cap park will provide 44 acres of open space in an area where the median household income is less than $24,000 a year. It is park poor. The folks who live along this route have no access, no easy access to parks. And the Hollywood freeway has negatively impacted disproportionately people of color since it was built in the 1950s, 75% of whom are non-white residents of the area. I mentioned the 44,000 jobs this will eventually create, in addition to 44 acres of open space, which will have active recreation. This project is good on so many levels, so I urge my colleagues to approve unanimously this technical change, that's what it is. And we will have plenty of time for discussion on the merits of this park in the near future, and I look forward to that. It's good for the city, it's good for Los Angeles, and I urge support of this facility. And lastly, let me just say that I am a resident of the 13th District. I have never, ever in my life, lived in Council District 1. I just want to clarify that for the record, since I was accused of something that is patently untrue earlier by one of the speakers. And I love my district, and I hope to serve it well into the future. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Corretts?
Yes, I do want to say for the record, I think there is a community with less park space. The Palms area in my district actually has a park that's about the size of this horseshoe, which we actually are in the process of renovating with Quimby Funds and making the best use of that that we have. This is a great idea, though. I've been waiting for a long time to see it happen, and I think the city should do whatever we can to add park space that took a lot of creativity for us to find. So, great idea, let's move it forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corretts, and I concur. Let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, now, can we recess the regular meeting and move into the special?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. You don't have to apologize. That sounds all right. Yeah, go right ahead.
Call the roll. Bloomingfield, Bonin, Busciano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Corretts, Corcoran, Labonge, Martínez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, West, and Timmer is President of Core, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President.
We're having a heck of a day at sea, huh? Okay. Would you quit cackling over there? Is that funny to you? All right. Okay, now, item 13, Madam Clerk, I believe we satisfied the public comment on that item?
Yes, Mr. President.
So if we, there are no speakers in the queue, let's just vote on item 13. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, now we'll move on to item 14, that has been called special by Mr. Walsh, John Walsh. Item 14 in the special, John.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I mean, I mean, Mr. Council President. Consideration for, this is Labonge and Bonin, Bonin, to constructing three traffic signal projects in seven, eight, nine, and 10. These are new projects, and we see the companies, all the different companies, excuse me, we're on number 14. The three traffic signals at seven, nine, and 10. We're 100% in favor of this, and thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. There are no speakers in the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, item 14, forthwith. Okay, now, let's take up items 15 and 16, and I believe we can do them together. Okay, so with that said, Mr. Bloomingfield, we do have some cards, so do you want to take the cards before or after?
It's your pleasure. I'm happy to go now, we can do the cards after.
Why don't you just go right ahead?
Great. Rise today on the fourth day of the first shutdown we've had of the federal government since 1995. This shutdown is, it's not about partisan differences. This shutdown isn't even about healthcare. This shutdown is about a small minority group of the minority party trying to get something done that they couldn't get done through the regular process, and holding the government hostage, and being willing to shut down our government, basically because they couldn't get something done the way that they wanted to get it done. It is, it is a travesty, and what's important today is that we go on record as a council and saying that we don't want to stand for it. We want to see a clean CR, and we're gonna hear a little bit about the impacts of this on our city. Now, we're scheduled as a city to receive about half a billion dollars in federal aid. We're fortunate that we have some reserve funds, so we can kind of float along. But, so the impact of this, though, is really going to be felt on the people of Los Angeles. The 48,000 federal employees who live in Los Angeles who are not gonna get their paycheck. It's gonna be felt by first-time homebuyers across Los Angeles who are unable to buy their dream home because the Federal Housing Administration has shut down its first-time homebuyer programs, and who may miss out on a critical window of opportunity to be able to do that. It's gonna be felt by hikers who go out into the Santa Monica Mountains, whether it's closed or open, if they've accessed it, but they're not gonna be able to use restrooms, visitor centers, parking lots, campgrounds, or God forbid, they get hurt. There's not gonna be forest rangers out there to be, to be able to help them. It's gonna be felt by all of us. If you're flying, the tragedy we have in Mr. Bonin's district with the airplane in Santa Monica Airport, NTSB is shutting down its investigation, or suspending it, I guess, into the fatal crash because the federal government is shut down. I was a staffer in the House Budget Committee when this happened back in 1995, and that was, that was pretty awful as well. But at least that had some modicum of a budget nexus in terms of the debate that was being held. What's happening here is not, there's no relationship between trying to take a law that was legitimately passed three years earlier, that was, went through the Supreme Court, was declared constitutional, and now trying to go back in time, trying to change that, doesn't make any sense. And it, in my view, you know, whether you support the Affordable Healthcare Act or not, I mean, I support it, but that's not the issue. This would be just as bad if folks who had a different ideological bent, who said, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna leverage, we want to have better gun control measures, so we're gonna just, you know, hold our breath and shut down the government until we can insert something on gun control. That would be just as bad if it happened from a different ideological perspective. This isn't about ideology. This is about a functioning government. We here in Los Angeles, we're gonna speak with a clear voice, and we're gonna say we want government to function well. We want to work well together. We don't want to allow tyranny of the minority. We won't stand for it. Let's together send a message to Washington. Let's say that we, let's direct our resources, our lobbyists in Washington, to work on this issue, to join the chorus of votes, saying enough is enough. Let's get a clean continuing resolution or a clean set of appropriation bills, and let's fund the federal government and get on with our work and get on to improving the quality of life. So thank you for the opportunity, and I ask everyone to vote aye on this, and I look forward to any presentations on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Okay, if I can ask Mr. Miller to move towards the center table, and Mr. Corretts, do you want to go now, or do you want to wait until after Jerry's presentation? It's your choice.
I have to go now. I just wanted to make one comment, which is, I'm probably viewing this even more cynically than, than Mr. Bloomingfield. I think this actually has nothing to do with healthcare. I think this is the Tea Party at its worst. I think this is completely ideological, and I think it gives folks the opportunity that always wanted to find it to shut down the government for as long as possible. And if they were able to successfully shut it down indefinitely, they couldn't be happier. And it's very difficult to negotiate with a group that actually doesn't want to find a solution, and I believe is just looking for an issue to justify that kind of shutdown.
Thank you. Anyway, no outbursts from the crowd. And Mr. Corretts, I'm really, really glad that you said that. Okay, with that said, Mr. Miller, we'll start with you.
Okay. Mr. Sayha from the CAO, and I will be making a brief presentation. As Mr. Bloomingfield indicated, at the moment, there is no direct budgetary impact, but it really depends on how long the shutdown lasts. And Mr. Sayha will go through some of the major departments and their timing on some of the federal grant reimbursements, and then I'll follow up with a little discussion about the larger economic issues with this, as well as the debt ceiling debate that's coming up very soon, that combined with the government shutdown could have really extraordinarily bad impacts on us.
Good afternoon. Ben Sayha, Assistant City Administrative Officer. So upon the motion being submitted to the Council by Councilmember Bloomingfield, our office initiated a survey of departments to find out from them directly what impact would be felt by the department and by the constituencies that they serve due to the shutdown. So in response, very much like the Councilmember mentioned, the immediate, immediate impact will be minimal based solely on the fact that there are sufficient funds in place, whether they're front-funded through the General Fund or potentially provided by the Reserve Fund for a brief shutdown. And by brief, we mean something that would end in October. But as, I'll go through a few examples, the longer this prolongs, this issue, the more difficult it's gonna be for the departments to maintain their, their services, and in particular, those services that are provided by nonprofits that receive, if you will, pass through from, from the federal government to the city and then to, to these nonprofits. So the most significant impacts we've seen thus far would be in the Aging Department, where their nutrition program is entirely federal-funded, where a majority of their programs at senior centers are federal-funded. They do receive some funds from the General City Purposes Fund, GCP, but that's minimal compared to the amount of funding they get from the, from the federal, federal government, which is over $8 million. So based on what Aging Department has submitted to us... So based on what Aging Department has submitted to us, they indicated they could continue running their programs at their current service levels through the end of November, but then after that, it becomes very difficult to continue the service levels that they're providing, and that's the Meals on Wheels program, as well as a Congress meal delivery program.
So that means the seniors will not receive their lunches?
Exactly.
So they just, they're all on their own?
Yes, and it's not just the lunch program. It's, it's all the services that are provided at the multipurpose senior centers throughout the city.
Oh, so there are additional things that will have to stop?
Exactly.
Can you have some examples?
It's, it's, the nutrition programs, as well as the recreation programs at these centers, and like I said, for the time being, they have sufficient funding to cover them through November, but after November, it becomes very difficult, if not impossible, to continue the same level of service. We have similar responses from our Economic and Workforce Development Department, as well as our Housing Departments, where they have sufficient authority to draw down funds through the end of October. But after October, again, if the shutdown prolongs any further, they're going to run the difficulty of being able to, to provide their vendors, which are nonprofits in many cases, actual payment. So then you could have the, the impact of nonprofits not being able to play, pay their own employees, leading to even greater difficulties for many of our constituents. As, as, as we receive from the departments, a lot of, a lot of the, the grant funds we receive are based on a reimbursement basis, meaning that the General Fund will provide the front funding to do the budget appropriation, and then we process the billings, in essence, and they go back to the federal government, and then we are reimbursed. So provided that, that, again, the shutdown is not prolonged too, too much, we, we have sufficient cash on reserves and within budgets to, you know, in essence, cover that for the time being. But again, anything over than two months, we're going to be really struggling to identify sufficient cash, and, and then you'll be having to deal with the policy issues of who, which departments, which services should receive that, if, if it comes to it, those reserve funds in the meantime, until a, a resolution is, is achieved. So at this point, that's as, as detailed information as we've been able to receive from the department, given the, the time of, of when this has taken place, and today. We expect to continue discussing with departments to see what if, more detailed information we get from them, as well as any hard-dollar numbers that we can find, and we'll report those to you at that time.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Briefly on the larger economic impacts. The concern with the ongoing shutdown, combined with the potential debt ceiling problems, really, really are very, very serious. As Mr. Bloomingfield indicated, FHA loans are not closing, so any mortgages, property sales that are going through with FHA loans are being put on hold. That means that we're not receiving documentary transfer tax. SBA is not giving small business loans, so there are impacts on the ability for businesses to get the cash flow that they need to operate. Obviously, that has an impact on hiring. There are 49,000 employees in LA County from the feds. We don't know how many precisely are on furlough. I will say that things are changing daily. Even the US government website is internally inconsistent on who's furloughed and who's not. So it's very difficult to determine, you know, exactly who's furloughed. But clearly, there are a large number of people that are, that are not getting paid. There's no filming going on in LA River, in the Angeles National Forest, and in Sepulveda Dam. The agriculture and FDA inspectors in the harbor are at 50%, so any shipments that require sign-off by the FDA and by the Department of Agriculture are going to be delayed. So there are certainly indirect impacts, both on, on the local economy and on city revenues, that will multiply as this goes on. And again, in the event of not being able to resolve the debt ceiling debate, I mean, it's widely discussed that that could create another, you know, a complete freeze in the capital markets, which could be disastrous. So we're going to continue to monitor this and report back as often as, as necessary. Our sense is, Congress is supposed to be meeting all weekend. The Republicans are now trying to focus the debate on linking the debt ceiling debate with the closure of the government. We will see what comes out of that, but the last word we have is, is there doesn't appear to be a deal in sight.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, now I have some general, I'm not general, but I have public comment cards from three members in our audience today. You will be given two minutes to touch on items 15 and 16. That's John Walsh, Donna Pierman, and Miriam Fogler. Please come forward.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. As usual, you're all wimps. You don't, Tea Party, there is no Tea Party. There are people. You won't name the name of, of that politician, because you're all gangsters, you're all politicians, and you don't point. And I'll point right to the man responsible for this, and none of you have the guts to say it, and that's John Boehner. Evil incarnate. People don't realize he wears a toupee, so you can't see the two horns sticking out of the back of his head. This man spends his lunch hour at Capitol Park, feeds poisoning pigeons. That is how evil this man is. And you won't even mention him. He's the one responsible for everything. But I want to say something nice about him. He loves his mother. He's in love with his mother. He endures his mother. In fact, he's seriously dating his mother. And you know what you call someone who has sex with their mother? HollywoodHighlands.org.
Whoa. All right, Ms. Pierman?
Okay. I, I'm happy that council wants to have the resolution resolved, but I disagree with the, the fact that I strongly believe that it is over Obamacare, and Obama is the President of the United States, and he is responsible for this. And if I lose one penny from this, because I'm a federal employee, I will remember this, because in 95, I finally did get paid. So I wanted to show you that there is what happened with the federal employees. I am a federal employee, and I can tell you that I should be at work, scanning in medicals, changing addresses for claimants who are in front of our hearings appeals, and that's what I should, instead, say I do get paid. It's ridiculous to have a whole bunch of federal employees off, off at a time, and then finally go back, and finally, probably they'll pay us. We should be working. We want to work. I want to be able to help out the public. I didn't do it just for a paycheck. I did it because I wanted to help people. I wanted to help people get on disability, yeah, I'd be able to get on SSI. And I don't, I don't like the fact that Obama, I'm going to keep this Obamacare right in my face, and not be able, be able to work. I don't believe in Obamacare, because this is going to make it a lot harder for people. It's going to, people who are depending on, are going to get substandard care. They're going to be spending thousands of dollars, they'll spend a small amount, and then some, the money has to come from somewhere. And guess what, folks? The money is going to come from the regular people, whose premiums are going to go up. It's got to come from somewhere. What, does he think Santa Claus is going to send it?
Ms. Fogler, please come forward.
One way to break the government is to, is to break, you got, the only way to break the government is to bankrupt it, and that's exactly what they're doing in the federal level. And of course, they're going to do it at the county and the, and the cities. It's going to be all over the place, in Detroit as well. Of course, the unions, because I'm, because I'm digressing, but the point is, the federal government doesn't understand what they're doing, because they don't have to worry about it, because they're going to get their paychecks, folks. You know what we did in California? We did that to balance our books, was to make them balance the books in order to get paid. Well, we should have the same thing in Congress. Why don't they pass a law that don't get paid? And second of all, why don't they join Obamacare if they think it's so great? The Democrats especially. Because I'm not vouching for Republicans. I'm vouching for the American people, Americans. We should not have Obama in the, in the White House. You know, this man is a lawyer, and all they do is destroy this country. Lawyers destroy this country, just like here. You know, we had Tritonich was the next best, best lawyer we ever had to represent us, because he was a people's lawyer, not just Mike Furor and all these other people come up through the ranks of the political tree, okay? I know you're worried about your colleagues. When you vote there, please have dissenting votes. Don't just vote because you have to, because you want to be accepted by the fellow members. This is very bad policy that you have on yourselves. This is why we're in trouble, because there's not enough people voting against Obama, okay? And this, this is why we have a federal crisis. I knew it was going to shut down years ago, because he, you know, Clinton got in, that's when the whole chaos started. The whole mess started in 95. Of course, that was, you know, I know that's bad, too, what Bush did. I don't know if that was during his term, but the point is...
Thank you. Thank you, Miriam. Thank you, thank you. No, your time has expired, Miriam. You know that. Okay, before I, I go to Mr. Bloomingfield, what I'm thinking about, Bob, is that we, I guess we, we vote on, and you may correct me, I think we vote on item 15, then we defer 16 to Mr. Krikorian's committee to keep an eye on it, and if we need to have it quickly returned to the council, he'll be in a position to do that, so...
That's, that's what I was going to ask in my close, for you to do, so that's perfect.
Okay, so let's vote on, thank, first of all, thank the both of you very much. So let's vote on item 15. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, and without objection, this is referred to Mr. Krikorian's Budget and Finance Committee. I think what we'll do now is we'll finish out with our general public comment cards.
Mr. President, would you like to adjourn this special?
Oh, no, this, this adjourn, this special hearing and return to the regular. All right, so we're in our regular meeting as of now, and we're doing the last general public comment cards. Sharon Brewer, Sharon, are you still here? Oh, she left? So Sharon's left. Is there a Jack? I think it's a Lynn Blatt. Jack, please come forward. And after you is Glenn Bailey.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I thought I had three minutes. Well, I'm off and running. Panorama City has the honor of revitalization study from 10 years ago, that put out ahead of the Northridge Vision Plan, that being an architect and, and having my practice in Panorama City 10 years ago, we visited the businesses then and came out with an award-winning study that did get signed by Council President, then Padilla, and made part of planning ordinance to establish queue conditions, and see a renaissance of the commercial area in Panorama City that we've experienced. And, and so it's not four neighborhood councils, but it's one neighborhood council that was not yet formed, that we dealt with in the Urban Zine Assistance Team effort led by Bob Scott 10 years ago. So being a Panorama City Neighborhood Council Board Member, and Arlita Neighborhood Council Board Member, to see three things happen that we presaged, through the U-DAD effort, the passage of, the creation passage of Senate Bill 375, that established mixed-use pedestrian friendly and transit-oriented. Then comes districts and communities, TOCs and TODs, to establish for the 30,000 boardings every day at Rosco and Van Nuys. Freedom of movement, freedom to have live-work spaces together. I know it's not a transit-oriented district yet, but the light rail coming, and our efforts to bring light rail to, back to Van Nuys Boulevard after 100 years, is really important for our climate change, as I mentioned. Those are the three determinants of the bill that corrals developers away from family dwellings.
Thanks, uh, thank you, Jack. I'll take that card. Okay, Glenn, Mr. Bailey, followed by John Walsh.
Good afternoon, Council President Weston, Councilmembers Glenn Bailey. Couple of comments. First of all, starting with the obligatory reminder that, that those of us in the valley, 40% of the city, are still waiting for our remote video conferencing to be turned back on at Van Nuys City Hall, and so we can communicate with city council every time you meet, not just once every two months. Secondly, the Congress of Neighborhoods, that was held last Saturday at City Hall, 700 attendees, including a number of council members, and at the end of that session, there was an action session where two recommendations were made unanimously passed, that, I don't know if that's been communicated to the council yet, but I want to take this opportunity. First is that when neighborhood councils take official action on city matters, that we be, the request is, the recommendation is, that we be given the same consideration as city departments in making our presentations to the council committees and the city council, and that, and actually, five minutes is what we're requesting. There's really no time limit for city departments if there's Q and A and, and a presentation. We're asking five minutes. A lot of these issues are complicated, and if a neighborhood council is taking the time to develop a position, make a recommendation, sometimes it's more, it takes more than two minutes to explain it. The second recommendation was that neighborhood councils be given at least 60 days' notice of any proposed actions, so that we have the opportunity to review and evaluate it. And in my closing seconds, I just want to announce to you, but also to the listening public, that the Neighborhood Council Budget Day is being held Saturday, October 26, at City Hall, in the Board of Public Works Room 350, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. This is the annual event where the Neighborhood Council Budget Advocates are elected to serve as the budget advocates. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. I thought it was over 700. So I don't know if you heard an official tally. I thought it was, I really did, but, okay, Mr. Walsh, followed by Donna Pierman.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I ask you to adjourn the memory in honor of the memory of Trayvon Martin. I don't think you've ever done that before. Okay, why was Kathy Reardon here? Why was her whole family here? Because Garcetti kicked her off, the Animal Commission. And why did he kick her off? Because the evil one, Brenda Barnett, wanted her off. The animal Holocaust continues. Mike Bonin, come to our website, you will see a picture of Mike Bonin and of Alcoholics Anonymous. It's the new policy of Alcoholics Anonymous to support every single liquor license in America. Come to our website and see this. Now, as far as the race, the, the racism of Mr. Israel of the Coliseum Commission, on our website, we have a picture of Chief Parks next to a picture of the Nazi that he was likened to and called by Israel, by Commissioner Israel, who won't apologize. And I want to point, see if there's any resemblance. If you want to see it, come to the website now. And incidentally, and I'm not joking now, a few years ago, Mr. Parks was on the cover of People Magazine as the handsomest man in America, right? Right? And, but we have garbage, and incidentally, I, I want him to change his name, Mr. Israel, to Mr. Palestine, because I don't want Jews to be blamed for his racism. Mr. Palestine is his name from now on. Jose Weezer, here he is. Now remember, he has had his offices exorcised. The devil, Sergeant Carlos Lopez, has performed an exorcism. LAPD officer, I still have 15 seconds. You will be resigning fairly soon, Mr. Weezer, once the Blue Ribbon Committee comes in and points to the sexual harassment. HollywoodHighlands.org, and have an okay day.
Ms. Fog, Mr. Parks?
I often do not like to correct Mr. Walsh, but it wasn't the cover of the magazine, and it wasn't the most...
and it wasn't the most handsome, it was 50 most beautiful in the world. Just wanted to correct that.
Mr. Parks, thank you for correcting the record. Ms. Fogler, followed by Rick Nightingale, and I'm going to let this one come in from a John Cameron, we're going to...
Oh, Donna Peerman's not next?
He left?
No, Donna, how about Donna Peerman?
Oh, you come on, Donna, I'm sorry. I'm getting old. I wasn't viewed as one of the 50 most beautiful people, so my feelings are hurt. So anyway, you go right ahead.
Okay. Yeah, anyway, I'm glad you're still the president and not yet the mayor, because I'm going for Garcetti, who is right there. Anyway, I wanted to say that I agree that I think we should have the video conferencing open, because, you know, so that we could speak every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. You see, there's a lot more people that came over here that had a lot important things to say, although that was in the San Fernando Valley. And every two months is not good enough. The only reason I'm here today is because the furlough. Otherwise, I'd be over there working. And I'm really totally very upset about this furlough that's going on, because I strongly need that paycheck, and I live on that and need that for rent, and for bills, and for food. And I'm both mad at the Democrats and the Republicans for shutting this down. It's totally unreasonable. They should have come up with something that said that automatically there's not going to be any shutdown, they will continue while they sit around and play around, but they shouldn't be paid during that time. Because if they can't come up with a decision anymore, and believe me, if they weren't get paid, they would suddenly come to an agreement. So I'm very happy to see that the city council is totally against the federal shutdown. So that's the best things that I saw right now. And so please reopen video conferencing for Van Nuys, so that everybody in the Valley, it's hard for the elderly.
Thanks, Donna. Miriam Fogler, followed by Rick Nightingale, and we'll close this with, I think it's John Cameron? Okay, go right ahead, Miriam.
You know, they don't belong to the Obamacare Congress, they have their own health care. Folks, listen to that. They make laws for everybody else, but they don't live by the laws themselves, they're above the laws. Now, you think you all people have the same thing? You don't, because we're all under God. You know God's there, because I lost my dad in December, so you better know where you're going to go after you leave here. The point is that this is unnecessary shutdown, what they did, passing this thing, you know, affecting everybody's lives. And what else can I say? Just that I want the video conferencing open for everybody here, I want it advertised on Channel 35, want people to come out. We need to have, you know, different get-togethers, and we need to have once a month with our council lady, beautiful Nuri Martinez. You know, we need to get together. We need to bring people out to get out here to meet the council people, and we need to be at the meetings. And we need to talk about public awareness, about public safety, because I was driving down here on Victory Boulevard, over here past, you know, Van Nuys Boulevard, you were the church on the corner there, and the fire truck, she, down there by Hazeltine and Victory, the cars on the right wouldn't move over, and they blasted the horn, they wanted to get going, and those people wouldn't move over for me to move over. So I was very upset that these people are not following laws. You know, people are not following the laws anymore. It's very bad. So, you know, we, we need to have dissension votes, we need to have people who do not agree with other people, because if you don't, if you don't have people disagree, and you only have people voting just for all one, it's like you're not giving people a difference of opinion, okay? And that's how now things are not getting done right.
Thank you, Miriam. Good to see you again, and I'm sure you will tame that cat. Rick Nightingale, John Cameron, I'm happy for you too. Rick Nightingale and John Cameron.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. I can't believe that yesterday, when they voted to turn around and give this driver's license deal. We have laws in the United States, and it just seems like everyone just passes over them. My father told me way back in the 60s that when the illegals came here, and they started coming, and everybody's, oh, it's okay, man, it's only a few of them. They've taken over the place now, and now they're going to give them driver's licenses. I don't understand what's it coming to? Why do we have laws, and why do I have to obey the laws?
It's the new world, Rick.
Yeah, it is. It's pretty soon, I'll tell you. And you wonder why everybody gets pissed off. You know? It's just unbelievable how you people can turn around and the politician can just sign and it's law, but it's not what we want. The majority, luckily, has some common sense, but the people like you on this committee, they say no. Just like I said, I like to be a fly on the wall when Hispanics have a dinner, and hear all the bullshit that goes on regarding it. That, oh, I couldn't vote on that because I have heritage.
Hold this time. I just want to apologize to any of the children that might have heard him say whatever it was he said. No, like you have a right to speak, I have a right to speak. We do have children that listen, and I'm just apologizing for you, because you will not. Grown-ups should not speak that way when children are listening. So I had to do my disclaimer. Now finish your time.
Fine. And then we have to listen to this and what you people vote on. Pretty soon, now they want to turn around and they can be on the juries and find you guilty and not guilty, and they can't even speak English. And now you turn around, I want to give my driver's license, does it state in the driver's license that they have to know to speak English? My friend just got hit by a Hispanic, got rear-ended, turned around, now he has brain damage, because he can't think, and he couldn't speak English. What's it coming to?
Thank you, and let's hope that you don't get into, you don't do a crime and have to go to court. Okay, Mr. Cameron? Yes?
Hi, Mr. Weezer.
Go right ahead.
Our prayers go out to you and your family. Hope the best for you. My name is John Cameron, I'm with the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, and it saddens me, when we go up as a group and we see staff members laughing about our issues, they should be ashamed of themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, what's before this committee?
Council has motions for posted and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Okay, the desk is clear. Announcements, members, announcements. Mr. Bloomingfield?
Thank you. Since we're in the Valley, I wanted to make sure that we talk about the CD3 Public Safety Fair that's going to be held this Saturday, October 12th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Westfield Promenade Mall in Woodland Hills, on Topanga Boulevard and Irwin Street. The activities at the safety fair are going to include the Quaky Shaky House, the earthquake simulator, first aid training, school safety, free giveaways. It really is a major event. It's done in conjunction with all of the neighborhood councils that are in my district, the Canoga Park, Winnetka, Tarzana, Woodland Hills, Reseda, they're all participating. It's, I urge you to come out to participate, and it'll be fun and very informative.
Okay. Any other announcements? Mr. Bonin?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I just want to remind people that we are right now in the middle of an extreme fire danger in Los Angeles. We have red flag days at least in through Sunday. LAPD is telling me that this could be the worst fire danger we've had in five years. Parking restrictions are in place on red flag streets, and just want to make sure people are aware of that, and also thank LAPD as always for all their hard work. Also wanted to remind people that this Sunday is Seek La Via downtown, an opportunity to experience the best of Los Angeles, all walks of life coming together, with the streets closed to vehicular traffic. People walk, they bike, they entertain themselves, and hang out. It's downtown on Sunday, hope people come down and enjoy it.
Thank you. Any other announcements? So could we please rise for adjourning motions? Everyone in the council chambers, please rise. First, I'll look to my left, are there any, I'll look to my right, any, well, Mr. Sidio.
Yes, Mr. President, we were unavailable, or rather, the family was unavailable to join us on Wednesday, but I am here for one of the oldest residents of the city of Los Angeles, and someone who passed, Mr. James Westy, who was born March 11th, 1911. He was born in Daklan, Bacot, Benoit Province, Philippine Islands. He was the youngest of four children. His family worked in the mining industry, digging, and later he joined the United States Navy, for which he was a member for 20 years. When you think about that, that he joined in 1929, he served us actively during World War II. And during that time period, Filipinos had been, were restricted in class and rank as they could only be stewards. He held the rank of Chief Petty Officer Steward, and he served on several ships, but was on the USS Saratoga when attacked by enemy Japanese aircraft. We don't have his official military transcripts, but it was during this attack that he was awarded the Silver Star for his bravery. He retired from the Navy in 1949. Under the Nationality Act of 1940, he became a US citizen, and while serving in the US Navy, his naturalization resulted with five of his children being born in the United States as citizens, which is rare during those times for Filipinos. In 1948, he met the lover of his life, Beatriz Lamis, in Daklan, Bacot. From this point on, they had started a family, raising their four boys and a girl. They migrated to the United States in 1967, settling in Los Angeles. After living in several places, he purchased their home at 1116 South Kingsley Drive. He also worked in the postal service, and subsequently retired to help raise his grandchildren. He was a founder of a group, he was very active, called the Filipino Organization BIPBAC, and it's an acronym, and it represents a, kind of those hometown groups that are very common today, this one from the Philippines. And basically, they helped assimilate and integrate Filipino immigrants to the United States, helped them in job search and placement, and helped them become part of our civic life. He passed away on September 28th. His remaining family consists of five children, six grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. He was one of the last remaining Filipino pioneers in the mid-city CD1, sometimes referred to as Filipino Town. And as others have passed, obviously, before him at his age, he was a 46-year resident of my district, one of the longest before the redrawn districts were established in 2012, may God rest his soul.
It sounds like he lived a wonderful life. Now I'm going to go to the other side. Any adjourning motions? Seeing none, this council is adjourned.